Building meaningful community is an idea that emerged, that is, in my life, that is back in the 70s. It's a construct. It's something that you can work with. It's about turning to each other, not against each other. It's about taking a functional approach. It's about moving forward. It's about keeping in step. That is, with things in real time, such as science, et cetera. And so that's why we are attempting to get the best explanations, that is, of the facts, the best explanations, namely, of the data. I mean, that would be nice, right? We want the best explanations of what's really going on in people's lives and who they are, right? We want to get along.
All right, everybody. It looks like we're getting started. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Jim Kaufman. And for those of you who do know me, it's the same. I'm the Chair of the WRC, but all of that is moot, really, because tonight isn't about me. It's fun to be tall. Thank you, Mr. Jim. So we've got a full schedule for you tonight. And I'm sorry we had to start late because of the rain, but even after I tasked Will to take care of the weather, he did not. So any complaints about the weather, put them on Will. Well, hey, we cannot hear me. Is this better? Okay. So for everyone who comes behind me, you have to put your mouth nearly on the microphone. That's right, you're coming behind me. So we're going to start with some WRC business that's going to go pretty quickly. We're going to talk about the, some works that are going on in the community and some tax dollars that are being spent on various projects and the FPL, streetlights. There's a lot going on with those. And I'm going to turn this over to the original Florida man, the scourge of the Pacific, the reason that fathers are always conveniently cleaning their guns when new boys come around the house, Max.
Hello. I can't really top that. I'm not running for anything. I work for the county. I work for the Escambia County Community Redevelopment Agency. Basically, the issue that was on the agenda tonight and kind of got usurped by the candidate season was the issue of the really bright lights that were put up at, throughout the Warrington area, but particularly as they're affecting properties in Navy Point. And Navy Point's unique in that the streetlights are in the rear of the property as opposed to at the front. So all the poles and all the service comes from behind the property. So streetlights, in the regular sense, you know, it would be fine and it stays a little bit away from your house, but these streetlights are much closer to their house and it's negatively impacting some folks. So there was a meeting that was held August 6th, it was Saturday, at Navy Point, Triangle Park, in the morning. And that's where we met with FPNL representatives to kind of hear the issues from the citizens. And I know it's not everybody, not everybody came to the meeting, but it was a good representation of the issues that people are having. If the light is too bright and it's negatively impacting you and it's coming in your windows and you can't enjoy your backyard at night and all those things. The long and the short of it is, the FPNL, you can contact me, I'll give you my card, you can contact me, or you can contact the FPNL representative, but it's just easier to contact me and I'll just pass it right on to him. So the point being is, if you have an issue with your streetlight, just contact me, give me your name, your address, and if you have the pole numbers, it's a little metal circular tab on the pole, starts with P, that helps identify the actual pole. The representative from FPNL will come out and meet with you and figure out a solution individual to you that resolves it. So we're not trying to ruin anyone's life or make the lights worse or anything like that. So we agree that they're too bright. I mean, we typically don't get, we haven't had any complaints like we have had with Navy Point, so we understand that it's an issue. And the solution is either rotating the lights or putting shields up, shields in certain directions. The purpose of the light is to illuminate the alleyways and not your property, but because those poles and just the way Navy Point was designed, you know, those poles where that light might have been affecting your property before probably wasn't such a big deal if it was that softer type of light, but these harsher LEDs do take a little getting used to, but they shouldn't, you know, you shouldn't have to deal with it impacting negatively on your property. So we understand that and it's not a blanket solution to just figure out, you know, just get rid of the lights or whatever. You can't just, you know, undo what we did, but the idea is to light up the alleyways and make them brighter for public safety purposes and, you know, just maneuvering around the alleyways at nighttime. So, long story short is, I have a bunch of cards. I'm the representative of the CRA. I'm the one that ordered the lights. Everybody hates me.
I don't.
Not a... Some people love lights. And if you love your lights, great, fantastic, then we don't have to do anything for your specific issue and life goes on. So I have my cards. Please contact me. Raise your hand if you want a card or you got a question. I guess we're doing questions first.
So we did provide tonight at least a map of the Navy Point area and we've also got, FPNL has got a very good web-based tool to identify your pole number and your light number by a map, by Google Maps. And if anybody wants to see how to use that, we'd be glad to give you a little learning curve over here anytime during the evening or after we finish up.
Okay. And that actually reminds me of something. Do not call FPNL customer service. They won't know what you're talking about and they won't give you any information because you're not the customer. I'm the customer. So it's, it's just the way that, because the government set it up, they have to deal with me. So we have a direct line with the people that put it in and his boss. Everybody knows that this is negatively impacting some folks and we're going to deal with it on a case-by-case issue till everyone's happy, for as long as it takes. So I'm sure there's going to be people that, maybe they're on a trip, live in Costa Rica half the year or something, they come back and the lights are bothersome, we can still help them too. So I have cards. Sir?
What are you doing to correct the problem whenever there is a complaint? Can you use reflector shields?
Yes. Correct. That is what we're, correct. So that's probably the primary option is actually using shielding specific to the light. Sometimes it's the rear or the side or the front. The lights could be turned. There's a lot of options, but yeah, the primary thing would be the shields. Because of the way the LED light comes down, it's not diffuse so much, it's kind of like almost digital, that you can turn that edge and it's not going to, the direct light's not going to come onto your property.
Yeah. The bigger the light, the more area.
Correct.
And the higher you need to go.
Yes. And maybe they could be lowered and there's options. So there's, it's going to be unique to that pole and those people's issues. So FPNL heard it loud and clear, but yes, the solution is, please contact me and I will get you in the right direction and FPNL representative will contact you. He's already, the one, we've already had a bunch of complaints and we, he's already started ordering shields, so he's just doing them in batches. So it's going to take a little while to get them all up. I mean, they, you know, nothing moves at the, at a super fast pace, but they are being responsive to it. Sir?
I'm disappointed. I thought we were going to actually discuss this issue in the meeting. But now they've come out and it's still on, okay?
Yep.
That's my first. Second one is, how long is it going to take for lower power and light to respond to your request to come look at your individual issue? Is it going to take forever? I mean, they're going to have to have a...
It's got to be one question at a time, or I'm just being yelled at. Yes, absolutely. So...
I've got a serious one. It's affecting my quality of life.
Okay. And like we spoke 10 minutes ago, if you contact me, I will get you in touch with the guy and he'll be right in touch with you. So I don't plan his schedule, but he's been very responsive to the folks so far, so I don't see why he wouldn't do it for you.
No. My wife and I live on Gulf Beach Highway and we've noticed that the rates that are charged by the utility have gone through the roof. And I know a lot of other people are concerned about this too. How much have you, well, what do you tell people about the reason for this hyperinflation in your rates?
I don't work for FPNL. I work for Escambia County.
Oh, okay.
I'm the, I'm the customer who ordered the lights. I represent the Community Redevelopment Agency. We do redevelopment activities in our areas such as streetlights, sidewalks, and home improvement grants.
All right. Well, you sound very informed, so.
Well, I might know a thing or two. I don't know everything, but, yes, but that's, I'll take a few more questions. I wasn't trying to occupy the whole meeting here.
Have you replaced all the lights that you're going to replace?
No, none of them have been replaced. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, for the, yes. So we did two phases for the Warrington CRA. North of Gulf Beach Highway was Phase 1 and Phase 2 is South of Gulf Beach Highway of the Warrington CRA. I didn't get an update as to exactly what percentage is done, but I believe they're close. So that would be Bayou Davenport, Navy Point, South Side of Beach Haven. Sir?
Can I answer his question?
Sure.
If you're worried about your meter and your power bill is so high, there's two things you can look into. That's balancing load in your panel and also Pensacola has all these hurricanes and storms and you have these new meters out that are not analog, they're digital. And anything that's digital needs to be calibrated every so often. So if you're looking for a spot on meter reading, you should look into seeing if you can get your meter calibrated.
Okay. Well, we do have to, got to keep it moving here, but anyone who wants a card, real quick, just raise your hand. I'll give you a card.
Please, may we have a round of applause for my friend and personal hero, Max. I like this guy so much that when I dry my hair, I only use one setting. Is that a hand up back there? No. So we have one more line item on our agenda for tonight for the WRC. It's going to go quickly and I'm going to introduce you to Ms. Lynn. She's so sweet, I get cavities talking about her. Ms. Lynn, please. LeAnn! I'm sorry, even with my glasses, I can't see very far.
Hey, I'm LeAnn Winchester. I was a former vice chair and with the invite list was the candidates for the District 2 Commissioner. And I appreciate that Mr. Jones is filming this for the record, so this is going to be addressed to them and this is in reference to a mention that was at his Beach Haven meeting last Thursday night. So I am reading this to those candidates that aren't here, so it's just something to, that we all deal with is storm water related issues. So approximately 57 acres comprise the New Baptist Hospital complex. The site incorporates key storm water management strategies that complement our Northwest Florida Water Management District mission concerning storm water treatment and runoff. The installations included an underground retention system, various storm water chambers, a sewer system, seven storm water ponds, and an onsite sewer lift station. The uplands site easily accommodates each of these installations which required deeper excavations. As one of the facts that's listed is the storm water retention system can hold up to 1 million gallons of water at peak capacity. There was a mention last week from Mr. Kohler of wishing that complex could have come to the wet side to serve our growing population. Here's the thing. My interest in bringing this up for discussion is about the continued filling and building on our vast swamp, Jones Swamp. We ran out of high ground in the early 70s. The new growth continues to, new growth continues to build on the swamp, yet swamps are a natural filtration system that supply water to underground aquifers. They typically hold water and characteristically empty their overflow during the rainy season and weather events, you can imagine like today. It is surprising how much filling and billing, building continues considering how much it has cost us, the property owners, as well as the taxpayers of this county. There's, there's, I'm looking across here and I know that there's people coming all the way across from, like bordering Pensacola all the way out to Inner Rarity and some of them might be represented here, that you're not going to change topographical maps, you're not going to change soil content. We have this Escambia County Soil Survey. No matter how much you fill, you're basically on, when you're dealing with wetlands and swamps and everything, you're, you're not going to change that characteristic of what that swamp is designed to do naturally. We've, I've lived here for 63 years, born and raised here, and we have a lot of people that I know around here that are older than me that have been dealing with this. I see some homeowners that have very serious situations. And anyways, that's one of the things that hasn't kind of really been brought up in their, their topic forums and so it's just something to mull over as we look into who will serve us. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. LeAnn. So we're coming to the section of the meeting where we're going to allow guest speakers to come up to the microphone and speak to you. Thank you so much as active citizens in our community for showing up and listening. I was in Publix earlier this morning and buying a sandwich and there was a woman in line behind me and we shook up a conversation and I said, "Are you going to participate in the election coming up?" And she said, "Oh, yeah, yeah." And I said, "May I ask, in what district do you live?" She looked at me like I had four eyes or three heads and said, "I don't know." And I was, I was sorely disappointed, but I let it slide. Thank you all for being informed in your decision-making process and thank you for helping pick the representatives that are going to best, do the best job for us. With that out of the way, I'd like to introduce Ray Gilroy. I think I'm pronouncing that correctly. Ray's going to give a quick spiel, or a long spiel if he pleases, and then open up the floor to questions. Please, when you have a question, address the microphone and ask it here in front of everybody. Thank you so much. Everybody, Ray Gilroy.
I grew up my whole life, what people call me Gilroy for some reason. I'm always like, the O is after the, is before the R, but it's Gilery. My name is Ray Gilroy. I grew up here in Warrington. I went to Warrington Elementary School. I moved away from junior high school. Actually, we ended up going to nine different junior high schools in five different states. My father was a power engineer and what he did was startup. So you'd go to a power plant, they'd do a startup on the power plant and we'd move. I came back here in the end of 8th grade, right after 8th grade summer. Actually, I went to Alberta Middle School for the last of my nine junior high schools. Came here, I went to Escambia High School for a year and a half. And at the time I started high school, I lived in Myrtle Grove and I was district from Myrtle Grove, but then we moved to Warrington to actually the house I still live in today. And I would ride my bike to Escambia High School every day from my house. And then one day about halfway through my sophomore year, I was riding my bike, somebody hit me in the face with a water balloon from a truck driving down the street and my mom decided that that was it. I was going to a district school and I was riding the bus. So I went to PHS for a year and a half. Custody issues between my mother and my father, I ended up going to New Jersey my senior year and graduating from New Jersey High School, which kind of sucks for me when I talk about how I'm a local and then people ask me where I graduated from high school and I got to tell them North Brunswick High School in New Jersey nonetheless. I, I'm married to a woman named Brandy. We've been married for 12 years. We both have two 17-year-old children. I actually just dropped my 17-year-old off at the airport this morning at 10 o'clock. She's going down to St. Petersburg to start her fall semester at USF. She's studying environmental science. We have a seven-year-old who is a second grader at Warrington Elementary School. And when my two older daughters were in school, that's what really got me interested in education. Because my oldest, my daughter, her name is Arizona, she went to Santa Rosa County Schools. My stepdaughter, her name is Charlotte, she went to Escambia County Schools. There is a major difference between what these schools do for these children. My daughter was, basically, we were begged at Santa Rosa County Schools to have my daughter tested for gifted. I put it off her kindergarten year, finally had her tested in first grade. By the time she had got out of 8th grade, they were pushing her into bright future scholarships and how to volunteer. My daughter here in Escambia County, nothing. My daughter who's in second grade, I've asked four times now about getting her tested for gifted. I keep getting, "Well, we'll get back to you, we'll get the information to you," over and over again. And that's the kind of thing that I see, the differences between what we're going on in Escambia and Santa Rosa Counties. I think that we can be as good as Santa Rosa Counties. Yeah, we have some problems here because we have a lot of students in poverty. We do. I mean, I live right across the street, right across Brancas over here, right off of Manchester on Park Drive, right behind Warrington Elementary School. I grew up here my whole life. I know these conditions. My mother was a single mom. She worked in the morning, no, actually, she worked at Baptist Hospital from 11 to 7, from 11 o'clock at night till 7 o'clock in the morning. She came home, she went to sleep and then she went to school to get her nursing degree. She's got a bachelor's degree in nursing, now she's retired. So we were those kids that you remember who were left on their own. They called them latchkey kids. You know, we had to fend for ourselves after school. And I, you know, when we look at the education problems that we're having in Escambia County, those are the kids that we're having the problems with. Those are the kids who are falling behind. Those are the kids who need the extra attention and that's what I want to make sure they're getting. And we're not really pushing that right now. If you, I gave everybody a handout, you could see that in Escam, in District 2, you know, people want to talk about, "Oh, our school district is a B." Yeah, Escambia County as a whole is a B, but we have schools like Bula, we have schools like Caro. Those all are A schools and they rise our school district up to a B. But if you individualize District 2, District 2, our schools, the schools that our children go to, they're a D. Now, I have a second grader who's going to go through school. My wife is already concerned about what's going to happen with Warrington. We lost Warrington. We lost our middle school. That middle school has been here as long as I've been here. It's been in here as long as you've been here. And now it's going to be taken over by a charter company. And it's not a surprise because we can look at the chart there and we have a 20-year history of that school being failed. And the problem is, is it's not just Warrington Middle School. There's many, many schools in our district where you can look at the grades and you can see C, D, C, D, D, D. The problem is, is that we are not putting enough emphasis on providing services to these kids. We're not. We have a navigator program in our school, but the program is underfunded and it doesn't affect every student. You know, in Escambia County, we have one counselor for every 400 students in our schools. One counselor for every 400 students. What I want to make sure is that our schools are the community center again. When I was growing up, Warrington Elementary School, we were out there on that playground playing basketball on the weekends. My mom took community classes at Warrington Middle School. That's over. It's done. They're not doing that anymore. You go to these schools now and there's a fence all the way around the school. And they say, "Well, we need to bring the community back to the schools, but you locked us out." And I know there's safety measures, there's safety reasons for that, but still, we can still invite the public back into our schools. One of the programs I want to talk about is, I want to bring middle school football back so that we can bring more mentors to our children, that we can expand band programs, we can expand programs like flag and we bring mentors in for band programs, we bring mentors in for flag, but not just football, but we have soccer and baseball so that kids have an excuse. When a kid plays sports, they can't fail in school. And I know we have a lot of different programs out there. We have youth league football, we have youth league soccer. I know because my daughter participates in pre-Dota-based soccer. But for a lot of parents, they don't have the option to take advantage of that. They don't have the transportation, they don't have the means to pay for that. But if we have it in our schools, the kids are already there. The other thing that I think that we could do in order to improve our schools, especially here in District 2, is expand pre-K. It's a must. The earlier we get children into school, the better off they are. There's a video and I posted on my Facebook and I'm talking to Ms. Sheila Holly. She's a retired teacher, a kindergarten teacher now, but she spent her whole career in pre-K at Oak Crest Elementary School. So five years ago, they killed the pre-K program at Oak Crest. Seven years ago, that school was an A school. This year, it's an F. Kids who come from poverty are already two years behind other kindergarteners in kindergarten. Two years behind. They do not progress into first grade at the same level as kids that come from affluent families. Affluent families have time. Most of them are taught how to do basics, how to draw, how to play with blocks, how to recognize symbols. Kids in poverty don't receive that. So what I want to do is make sure that we're expanding the pre-K back into our schools. Right now, most of the pre-K in Escambia County is done by private organizations, but the problem with that is, is that parents are responsible for getting their kids to pre-K. And again, we're talking about schools in poverty, we're talking about people in poverty, we're talking about single mothers who are working during the day and going to school at night, or the opposite of that, people like my mother. So we want to make sure that they have, we already have the infrastructure in place to get students to school. We have the bus routes already, taking their older brothers and sisters to school. So we need to bring those programs back to the schools so that we can educate kids. And we need to have three-year-olds and four-year-olds, but it all is one-year program in the two years. You can watch the video, it's on my Facebook page, Ray Gilroy for Escambia County School Board. I hope you check it out, it's very informative. Ms. Holly is a great person. Not only is she a teacher in our district, but her daughter is now a kindergarten teacher in our district. And they're very dedicated to the students they teach. So I decided to run for school board four years ago for the first time. And I've always been interested in education. Some of you guys might remember, I ran for county commissioner eight years ago in a race, I lost that primary. But then I was talking about education. I was talking about what the county could do as a partnership with our schools and things like sidewalks. You know, I made a post the other day about kids going back to school. We got kids waiting on the sides of roads that have no sidewalks. They're walking to school on roads that have no sidewalks. We need to work with our partners in the government to make sure that kids are safe on their way to schools. And that's another big issue of mine and for schools is transportation. You know, I was telling a story a little earlier about a girl named Elena. Elena was Warrington Elementary School Student of the Year last year. Elena told her grandmother that if she had to go to Warrington Middle School, that she was going to drop out. A six-year-old is so concerned about the state of our schools that she's threatening her grandmother to drop out of school. But her grandmother spent the whole summer trying to figure out transportation to get her to Bailey because she got her into Bailey. So her grandmother, who's blind in one eye, has to walk her two miles from her house to Warrington Middle School to ship her on a bus to Bailey. The problem is, is that we do have school choice. So you could choose to send your kids to another school, but if you don't have the means, you really don't have the choice. I want to make sure that we are working with community partners again. We can work with ECAT, we can work with community transportation, we can work with all kinds of different organizations to make sure that kids have these programs available through transportation. But the thing that we really need to do is to make sure that every school in Escambia County is a school of choice so that parents aren't worried about, "Oh, our kid's districted for Warrington." They should be going, "Oh, great, my kids are districted for Warrington. I want my kids to go to Warrington. I want my kids to go to Bellevue." But that's not what's happening. So, sorry, I thought I turned that ringer off. Excuse me. So I think I've talked enough. Does anybody have any questions that pertain to actual school board race and not politics?
Yeah. It's a two-part question, Ray. The first part of my question has to do with that spreadsheet that you put out.
Yep.
Do you have a copy of it here and can you explain what those numbers actually represent?
Sir, can. All right, if you're looking at the spreadsheet, I've colored it for you guys. The yellow schools are schools that... The yellow schools are schools that students who live in District 2 either are District 4 or attend. Not all these schools are in District 2. Here, I'll give you a copy. Go ahead, take that one, I'll get another one. All right. So the ones that are brown here are the schools that are not within District 2, but the District 2 students go to. So you might live close enough to Oak Crest or in Montclair, and you go to Oak Crest Elementary School, which is actually in District 3, but District 2 students go there. If you follow the yellow lines across, you'll see there's a purple line. That purple line going down represents the grades for our students on standardized testing. You can see here, we got Bellevue Middle School, 20% of all the students test proficient, minimum proficiencies in English. Then you go down, and you see, what is this, 28% in math, 25% in science. So those are the minimum proficiencies testing. That means those students, that many students, that percentage of students, 28%, actually test at the minimum that the government says that they should be testing for science. You go across, and then we hit the green, that's the percentage of the totals for the totals for the school. So again, with Bellevue, 37% of all students tested minimum proficiency, both math, science, and English. Next to that is the school grade. Bellevue's a D. But the line that you see coming off of those, those are the history of those schools and their school grades. So you have Cs, Ds, Fs. If there's a green mark, that's where, for some reason, in the middle of a bunch of Cs and Ds, they got a B. Now, what I've looked at and I've seen is there's a concerted effort when the school has a certain amount of years that they're not performing the way they're supposed to be. Because if the school's not performing the way that it's supposed to be, the state will eventually step in. That's what happened at Warrenton. For years and years and years, the school got Ds and Fs, and every once in a while, got a C. So the state will step in, they'll say, "Hey, you guys got to hire an outside contractor to come in." Well, you know how much we spend on outside contractors for Escambia County, for Warrenton Middle School? Almost $2 million for three years. And it didn't work. Because basically, having outside contractors come in and tell people how to teach these kids that live in this neighborhood who grew up in this way, isn't going to cut it. Those kids need people who know their lives, they need people who know how to reach them, and they need that direction. So what happens is, every couple of years, they make a concerted effort. They put more teachers in, they bring the best and the brightest, they'll take the principal from one elementary school who's doing really well, and they'll move them to that school. And that school will go up to a C. And they'll go, "Okay, we got to sit off our back for three years, and it's back to business as usual." Then you'll see the grades going back down, and you can follow the patterns of the grades as they do this. And what was your second part?
Let me just address the first part.
Okay, I thought I was answering the questions here.
Yeah, you did answer the question.
Okay.
And I don't believe you understand the numbers that you're reading.
I do understand. Now, he wants to talk about the graduation rate, which the graduation rate for Escambia County is 91%. 91%. But if you look, 91% of the kids are graduating from high school. So you got a high school rates where kids, 28% of them, can read a proficiency. What are we graduating them on? I don't understand that. And a lot of you guys went to school here. Now, how many of you remember when you were kids, what a D was? It was 75 and below. You know what a D is today? 60 is a D. So not only are we graduating kids who can't read a proficiency, we are actually accelerating their grades by making sure that the standards are lower.
Now, would you like to hear my answer?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
65 was a D.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on. That wasn't even my answer. On Ballipedia, this is where I get my information and how it digests, how it explains the numbers that are given. It also breaks it down between different genders and races and stuff. But the question is, how does he read the percentages? The following tables show the graduation rate of district students each year, and it's scored on the proficiency at or above the proficiency level of each school year. So in other words, the numbers that he's using is a percentage over the graduation rate as far as how each of the categories are done. If you go to ballipedia.org and you look up Escambia County School District, it's got a complete breakdown of everything from revenue to rates. Let me just kind of go over here and tell you what it is.
This document that I gave you comes straight from the State Board of Education.
Proficiency assessments, okay? So I mean, I could read this all to you, but there's mathematics, and it shows the percentages. Then it's reading and language arts, it breaks it down so you know how many people are actually, you know, passing and failing based on those that are above passing. So that's why you have a lower percentage in your graph that you're not reading correctly. You also don't have any explanation or any links to the properties that you're showing there. So, now, the second part of my question was, have you noticed...
Go ahead, I'm listening.
Okay. Have you, and it does have to do with the graduation rates and how they've increased over the last 10 years.
Of course they have. When you lower standards, you'll have more kids graduating. When you go from being a 16 to a 65...
Standards are set by the State Board of Education.
Yes, they are. And those standards have been lowered.
And what proof do you have of that?
Who here, JT just said that it was a 65 when we were in high school, because you said it was 65 when we were in school.
When I was in high school, in 1972, I graduated, and D was at 60%. I know, because I got plenty of...
Well, then they raised it when I was in school, and they lowered it again.
But I got a few Cs, Bs, and As. I was generally an average student, and I can comprehend this.
Okay.
I just don't think that you're portraying the numbers correctly.
Well, everybody can interpret the numbers any way they want to.
All right.
I'm telling you that this document came straight from the Board of Education, this is the history, and this is what they grade the schools on, this document right here. Anybody else have a question, ma'am?
I have not done my homework, but what is your educational background after high school?
I went to Piedmont Virginia Community College for marketing and management. I moved back here, and I went to PJC for culinary art. I didn't graduate from that program because I was actually offered a job, which is, I was making almost six figures as a sushi chef, I moved to Panama City.
That's incorrect, sir.
That's incorrect?
Yeah. I know for a fact it was incorrect.
The money, the amount of money I was making? What's incorrect? What is incorrect? That I didn't graduate from the program? I just said that, JT.
Mr. JT, do you have some questions?
Yeah, yeah. I've known Ray Guillory for a long time, you see, we went to high school together, I met him when he was a sophomore in high school.
When I went to PHS, yes.
That's right. You were a sushi chef, that was correct. And you went to Panama City, and you made $30,000 a year. When did you quit culinary arts school? How many classes did you attend? Did you even finish the semester?
Yes, I did. I went to culinary arts for two and a half semesters. At PJC.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Why did you come home and say, "Hey, there's a lot of math, I'm not going to do this anymore"?
JT, no, I did not.
Yeah, you did. We were living together, Ray.
Yeah.
You were my roommate.
JT, does anybody have a question?
That was my question. I know this man. And if you elect him, you're electing the wrong person.
You guys want me to explain this? Because, no. Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm here to talk about actual issues in the school board race. Yes, ma'am.
My question is, did you, the first program you started, did you finish it, get your AS or AA? And the second one, did you start and finish and get your AA or AS?
No, ma'am, I started at...
I just want to know the reason. My idea, and this is for breaking through kids, that if you start something, you finish it. I want to get a feel for you as a person. When you had a goal, did you start it and finish it? Now, if you're on your behalf, apparently you did work later in that, and I can understand you didn't need to finish the culinary, you had talent, somebody recognized it, you did that.
Yes, ma'am.
So that is my purpose for asking you, you know, are there any other courses or, you know, things like that, that you have done, some management with your company, and what companies have you worked with now?
Actually, today, right now, I work for GCE, which is Gold Coast Gateways to Employment. We, I work at the NAS Pensacola at the, sorry, let me get back to this.
Yeah, I just want to know when you started...
At the galley. Right. So I left school in Virginia for financial reasons. I moved back to Pensacola. Then I decided I'd go to culinary school. I was offered a job in Panama City, so I left culinary school because the reason I was going to culinary school was to get the type of job I had in Panama City. I came back from Panama City, I started my own business called Gold Coast Food Services. And for two years, I ran the sushi bar out at the Jellyfish Bar, and I ran the kitchen at the Malibu. That faltered after the oil spill, because I hadn't, I started the company right about the same time as the oil spill, so I was running those companies. We lost our revenue out there at the Jellyfish Bar. The Jellyfish Bar was covering the costs and expenses at the Malibu, so I shut that company down. At the moment, I'm also the president of a short film company. We've actually won 18 awards for our short films. We do not make money, we do it for artistic reasons. But we actually have a feature film in production right now. We've raised capital for that. I've also been in restaurant management, that was my job. I wasn't just a sushi chef at Panama City, I was actually the culinary manager for a restaurant called Pompano's, if anybody's familiar with Panama City. Yes, ma'am.
And to answer my question, you had a passion, you didn't finish the formal education, but you worked in it. Okay, so during all those business years, did you ever end up having to file for backup?
No, I did not. And the reason I now work the way I do is because I actually have carpal tunnel syndrome very badly. So from those 15 years of using knives, rolling sushi, it killed my hands. So now I work in corporate or institutional food because it's actually easier on my body. Most of us are people who did well in the restaurant business, so, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So, yes, I was on a career path then because I went to school for culinary, and I was offered those opportunities that basically is why I was going to culinary school, so I left school to pursue those opportunities.
So we all know that, Escambia, I came up in Clearwater High School, really, I understand the problems we have in this area. So what you, without having to write a bunch of passes, what, where would you start? Would you start back at preschool, would you start at graduation, right?
Well, I would start at preschool. Like I said, I was talking about getting those kids educated early gives them the best opportunity.
How are you going to fund that? We all agree with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, that's my question.
Well, one thing is, is that in Escambia County, we spend more outside of the classroom than 70% of all other schools in the state of Florida as a percentage. Most schools in the state of Florida, the average is 78% of the money goes into the classroom, and Escambia County is 73%. So we really need to take a hard look at our budgets and make sure that we're not spending more money at J.E. Hall than we are at Warrenton Middle. Right. And our budget has ballooned. Four years ago, when I ran for school board, the budget for Escambia County Schools was a little less than $700 million. This year, it's projected to be $850 million. That's a lot of money. That's your money, that's my money. I want to make sure that it's spent in the best way possible. And that's the thing too, is the school board does waste money. They just came out with a study, their strategic plan for this year. If you read that strategic plan, it's not really a plan. It's a plan to plan to plan. The major thing that came out of that strategic plan was to rename the school system from Escambia County District Schools to Escambia County Public Schools. How much money are we going to spend on painting buses, changing letterhead, logo design, without putting a dollar in the classroom?
I can answer that. Let's move on. On and over.
Is there a hand up back there? Come on up.
You mentioned about, I'll just stand here.
Hey, Ms. Donna.
About, you know, starting pre-K a little earlier, a great idea, we all agree with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Along with Shirley, how are you going to do it? How are you going to fund it? Do you really need getting a, how would you get a three- and four-year-old to this program? Because I would put my three-year-old on a school bus. I've been on school bus.
That's actually part of my question, if it's okay, I'll tie in...
The funds are already available through the state. The thing is, is that private corporations right now in Escambia County, like daycares and churches, are receiving that money for their pre-K programs instead of the schools' district. So when we expand those pre-Ks, as those kids go to our school district schools, that money follows them. And especially for Title I students, which are some of the poorest kids in the state, they actually receive extra funds for Title I pre-K. Anybody else have a question? You had a question?
I have a question.
Okay. You're actually standing here.
As a mathematician and somewhat of a sociologist, I have to look and see at the inevitable, what seems would be inevitable, because the V in VPK stands for voluntary.
Right.
And you're going to have the same affluent reaction because the affluent parents, they're going to want to spend more time and energy on their children. This is just for context, it's not my question. But there's a chance that VPK will be filled up by affluent parents who are just volunteering to send their children to school. My question is, from where will the funding come for the VPK? Because it's separate from the $800 million, $850,000 that is used for the school systems here.
Right. Well, that's what I was just explaining about, how that program, that money already exists from the state of Florida and federal government, especially for Title I kids. So that money would just follow the kids back in the school system. And yes, affluent parents already take advantage of VPK. All my kids went to VPK. My daughter went to VPK at Warrenton. The problem is, is now Warrenton doesn't have a VPK program. So other parents in the neighborhood who can walk their kids to school, that's what I do, I walk my kid to school every morning. So they're no longer having that available. Now, the nearest VPK program in Escambia County, I want to say, is, from there is Navy Point or Global Lormening Academy. So that's quite a bit... Huh?
Pensacola has one.
Where?
West Pensacola.
West Pensacola. Well, I'm talking about, like, parents who live in this area here, like I do, who go to Warrenton, who's districted for Warrenton, how they have to get their kids to further distances because now Warrenton doesn't have one.
Actually, I am an administrator in the school district, and there are 16 VPKs around at all of our Title I schools. And all the students are asked to get transportation for Escambia County School District.
Please, just provide the phone.
Come on up.
They do provide transportation.
Can you introduce yourself?
Come on up, sweetie.
Come on up. We need to come on up.
I promise, we sincerely want to hear what you have to say. Please introduce yourself and ask a question.
My name is, let's see...
Here, you want to use this one? It's not moving.
That's okay. Shayna Betzko, and I am the Assistant Principal at Home Elementary. No photos, please. Just, I just wanted to make a quick comment about the VPK programs. We have, actually, at my school, we have two VPK programs that are wonderful, as well as ESC pre-K all around the district. Currently, there are 16 VPK programs in our elementary schools, and the school board has actually sent a request to the legislative to expand the program already.
How much of those are in District 2? That's what we're interested in. District 2, I mean...
We're interested in all of our kids. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Well, we are interested in all of our kids, but my contention is, and your father-in-law, is that District 2 schools and District 2 where we live, you know, he's interested he's interested more in the, the district as a whole, and that's what he talks about. You know, that's, but the problem's in the school district, and is mainly here in District Two, and that's what I'm talking about, is District Two, because that's where.
Not everybody here has a good concept of that, so please let her explain.
Right.
So, at the last school board workshop, and you guys can view the workshop on the web, the webpage through the Escambia County School District, they actually sent, um, they've already been in the works to ask for more funding for VPK, um, because it is not in the budget at all. It comes from a totally separate coalition. Um, I think it's like the Early Learning Coalition, there's a few other avenues of money, but it has nothing to do with the budget for the school district. So, I think we all agree, we need VPK a hundred percent, but it's how are we gonna fund it? So, I do agree with you on that.
But you do know that the money comes from the state and the federal government, and does follow the students, right?
Absolutely. But, we still have to have the money in the schools to fund it.
Right.
For transportation, teachers, and all of that.
Right.
And if a child is in VPK, just a heads up, even if it's, um, ESC pre-K, which we have a ton of them around our district, even at three years old, they can be staffed as early as three. We do provide transportation.
All right.
Thank you.
And that goes to another point. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. About communication within our school district. And I was talking about that earlier with, uh, my child and the gifted program. Um, in the last four years, I, I've been following Mr. Fetsko in the school board. I can remember one town hall meeting. Now, my thing is, is that in order to reach the parents who are not being reached, that we have to get out into the community. And that's why I'm planning, as a school board member, if I'm not, on days that we don't have the school board, to come to meetings like this, to have my own meetings, weekly, with parents. And not just, oh, at five o'clock on a Friday, hey, I'm gonna have a, a town hall meeting. Because not every parent is available at five o'clock on a Friday. Some parents, you have to have a meeting at nine o'clock in the morning. Some parents, you're gonna have to have a meeting at noon. But, in order to reach the parents, we have to be able to, to go out to where they are, to give them the opportunity. And I've said this before, you can't hold a meeting and expect a hundred people to show up. You might have to hold a hundred meetings and hope that ten people show up. But those ten people need to be reached. And as your school board member, that's what I'm gonna be about, is getting out into the community, getting the community together, working with our community partners at the county commission, the state legislatures, to really put a focus on public education, especially here in District Two. Because our whole school system is only as strong as its weakest link, and that's us. Now, we live in Warranton. This is Warranton. This is, uh, we live in District Two, Morroto Grove, Warranton, Mayfair. For the longest time, and we all know this from every sector of our government, we kinda get overlooked with the rest of the county. So, what we need is somebody on our school board who's gonna fight to get what we need here in District Two. And some people will say, well, you know, you have to work with other school board members. Yes, we will. You know, I have a really good relationship with Mr. Williams in District Two, and District Three, who might become the school board member. I have a really good relationship with Dr. Edler, in District Two, who would have, uh, be on the school board. So, we will have the means to work to get those, cause District Three and District Two are very similar. And we've both been overlooked because, basically, we're the poor stepchild of all of Escambia County over here. And we know it. So, we need somebody, a real fighter, somebody who's gonna stand up and say, hey, look, this isn't just about what's going on here in this, in the whole school district. This is about what's going on in these schools and my district. The kids, schools that my kids go to, the schools that your grandkids go to. If there's no more questions, I'll wrap it up, cause I can see Mike Kohler showed up. I think he was on the.
What year did you go to culinary school? What year did you go to?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I want to thank everybody who shows up tonight for just being involved in politics. I don't have the stones for it. You guys are my heroes. What's up, Mr. Jim?
Please, if you have a question, come on up here to the microphone and ask it. That's what it's, that's what it's there for.
Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Paul Hamlin. Just a round of applause, please.
Thanks, everybody, for having me. I'm a little short guy, so I gotta lower this down a little bit. Um, this, uh, you know, the campaigns are coming to an end. You know, it's gonna be time for voting next week. Is that something you wanted?
No.
Okay. All right. That, that's better. The campaigns are winding down. Um, thank goodness, I'm sure everybody's thinking, thank goodness for that. So, as it winds down, I wanna just kinda switch gears and keep this on a, on a positive, positive note. You'll be glad to know that the judicial canons for candidates for judge limit what we can say, particularly about each other. In fact, we had a seminar that we had to complete, and that we were told, just don't even talk about your opponent, talk about yourself. And so, I think that's probably the best policy, to keep everything, um, above board, and, and on a positive note to end. My name's Paul Hamlin, I'm running for Escambia County Court Judge. It's a misdemeanor judge position with crimes that are up to one year in, in jail, or, um, a thousand dollars in fines. This particular, um, job is gonna be filling in for Pat Kinsey, Judge Pat Kinsey, who's retiring, and it's an open seat. And it's primarily a civil, uh, division, doing landlord tenant, small claims, things of that nature. My background is, I, uh, I was born and raised in Vermont, came down to Florida for, for college, um, went into the Marine Corps after college, spent ten years flying F-4s and F-18s all around the world. People say, thanks for your service, and I say, no, thank, I'm, I'm thankful for it. I get to fly around and blow, blow stuff up, so, that was, that was kinda fun. So, it was my pleasure to serve. Um, after I got out of law school, after, uh, the Marines, I went to law school in Gainesville, and came back here and got my first job, uh, as a public defender. I spent eight years as a public defender. Um, and then, uh, I, I went into, uh, practice at a large civil law firm. So, for about four years, I was at a civil law firm. After that, I opened up my own law firm, and so, about the last ten years, I've been practicing in my own law firm, um, partly with my son, and then, uh, he's on his own. So, he left me behind and went on to bigger, bigger things. Um, so, my criminal law experience is, um, uh, I've had basically twenty-two years, uh, that I've been around here. I've been doing criminal law the, the whole time. And, um, I've got, uh, four years of civil, like I said, within the last ten years, I've done four years of civil practice. I thought, I thought that was your wallet you left up here. I was gonna say, that's handy. Um, so, you know, for, for me, my civil experience, my criminal experience, uh, I'm still doing, actively doing trials. I've had, I've had a couple of trials just in the last, um, uh, last month. So, I'm actively doing, doing the, the everyday work, even though I'm campaigning. Um, my, I have a, a bit of life experience to go with the civil and the, and the criminal practice. Uh, in the Marine Corps, you know, of course, I was stationed all over the world, all over the country, and you get to, uh, you know, learn about people a little bit in, in that way. Um, you, you're not always around people that are similarly situated as you, or have the same upbringing, so you, you get a, a wide, um, variety of people that you have to learn how to deal with, and to understand where they're coming from, and be tolerant of their, their, uh, opinions and their positions, which is, I think is a critical element in, in being a judge. Um, I came back to Pensacola. Uh, I could've gone anywhere. I chose Pensacola because I had gone through flight school here, and it's, it's really such a great place. So, thirty years ago, I came back and made it my home. So, uh, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not that you, can you ever really be anything but a, uh, but a, a northerner, yeah, if you're down here. So, I don't know how many years it takes to, to become local, but, you know, I, I never claimed local, but I have been here for thirty years and, and chose to come back here because of all the, uh, the good things about it. Um, I've given back to the community as I've been here. I've gotten over, done over five hundred hours of volunteer time with the USO. I've volunteered with the Veterans Court, and I, um, I do everything I can for veterans, uh, at minimal cost, whenever they, whenever they, then, whenever they need a hand. Um, my judicial philosophy is follow the law. You can't make the law, you can't change the law, the law's the law. If you want to change it, you take that up with the legislature. But, I don't, I wanna, I gotta follow the law, but you can interject some common sense and fairness into it as well. You know, the, the misdemeanor, uh, divisions are sometimes called the People's Court, because it has the everyday, um, things in it, like from the criminal side, you know, driving without a license, battery, DUI, things like that. So, it's not earth-shattering stuff, but it's certainly important to the people that are, that are involved in it. You know, if, if, uh, someone comes to court and they say they get thirty days jail as a, as a penalty, well, thirty days jail, you lose your job. So, you lose your ability to pay your, your child support. You can't pay child support, your license gets suspended. It's a big county, and it's, and wide-ranging, so now you drive, you get stopped, now you get a criminal charge. It's just, you know, it, it spirals. My goal is to have people not come back to court, either if it takes thirty days jail to straighten them out, or if it takes helping them to get their, get their driver's license. I don't want them to come back. You know, the, the primary purpose of the system is to protect the, the community. So, just because we give people a chance, doesn't mean we're neglecting the, uh, that purpose. But, protect the community first, and, and don't disenfranchise people with the system. And, um, you know, maybe we'll all be better off as a community and that, and as individuals. So, in light of the time constraints, probably, that we've been put in, um, I just wanna, I wanna end the campaign on, on a positive note, and ask you for your vote for Escambia County Court Judge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamlin. That role as judge, it's not a, an elected, uh, official, I'm sorry, technically, it is an elected role, but it's not a representative role, uh, which is going to be much harder. This is, uh, well, being a judge is gonna be very hard. Thank you. Thank you so much for putting the effort into, uh, running and, uh, and all the effort that you put in, for everything you do. Next, and, uh, I think last, is going to be Mr. Scott Ritchie. Just a round of applause. Oh, did you have a question?
No, that's Kel. That, he, he's with his school.
Oh, would you come on up? Oh, 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 no, I'll tell you, tell you what, we've, we've actually had a queue of, uh, candidates in line. I'll, I'll put you at the end if it's okay. Uh, just right after Scott Ritchie.
That's fine.
Uh, miss, everybody, Mr. Scott Ritchie.
Thank you all for being here on a rainy night. We were actually driving over, um, over near the airport, and so, two of our paths here were actually flooded out. So, we got to do a little bit of a roundabout way here. Uh, I suspected if this had been a town hall with some more of the county too, you'd have some things to say about the flooding. But thankfully, that's not what we're here for. Um, this is a nonpartisan race, so we don't get into our partisan politics on this. There's not really, it is true, a lot we can say. Uh, what I can tell you is that I am from Escambia County. I grew up here, went to Pine Meadow Elementary, Wedgewood Middle, and Tate High School. Uh, left to go to the University of Florida, where I earned a degree in finance, and then Florida State University, where I earned my law degree. Came home and spent a couple years doing civil practice, so that's insurance, uh, construction defect products liability, those kinda ca, cases. And then fell in love with the courtroom. So, I left and went to the public defender's office. I've been there about seventeen years. In that time, I've handled thousands of cases, um, and I've spent thousands of hours in the courtroom. I've overseen attorneys and support staff in multiple offices in multiple counties, and I have the experience dealing with staffing, personnel, budgeting, the kinds of things that you have to be aware of to take care of taxpayer money, and to understand what's going on in the courtroom. And that supervisory experience at some point can be a little, everybody kinda rolls your eyes when you say supervisor, right? It's the guy that's standing there not doing anything. But, that's not the case with these. These are, this, part of this is mentoring these younger attorneys and making sure that they aren't, they aren't missing anything. Uh, making sure that they understand why they're doing what they're doing. And so, those are, that's real hands-on supervision that requires attention, requires me to be prepared and to go through the case with them on a real individual basis. So, those are the kinds of experiences that you need in, in order to handle the large, massive dockets that the courts experience right now. Um, you know, one of the things that I say is the experience with HR and staffing and personnel. And I didn't do all those myself, and we had a great team at the office, and just part of it. But, uh, one of the things that you learn is, what do you do when somebody is ten minutes late for work, right? Same kinda thing that you deal with as a judge. Well, you broke the rules, you were late for work. So, then you have to ask, well, why were you wait, late for work? Is there something, is there, have you done it a bunch of times? And then you gotta decide what to do. Uh, and being a judge is very much the same thing. You have to look at the circumstances, you have to look at the background, you have to look at the individual. You have to make sure that they have their time in court to communicate what they want to communicate with you, and then you gotta make a decision, uh, and move forward. Um, you know, I, I agree with Paul. I think that the judicial philosophy, that's really the only acceptable one, is to follow the law. Uh, it's certainly what I will do. Um, I feel maybe a little bit stronger about criminal sentencing. The law says very clearly that the point of criminal sentencing is punishment. Uh, I believe that part of following in the law is believing in that. Uh, I, that's not to say that there aren't times where you may be able to do something as part of a sentence that would help someone, or help get them back on track, but that's not the primary concern. Primary concern is punishment in a criminal sentencing. Uh, and as, as Paul mentioned, this is actually predominantly for a civil seat, at least it'll be civil for the next two years. So, that's small claims, um, up to eight thousand, civil suits up to thirty, that'll increase to fifty in January, and then all the landlord tenant. So, this is a county court judgeship, and on the grand scheme of all the judges that are in our system in the state of Florida, this is the bottom of the totem pole. We should not be in a position where we're making up anything new. All we should be doing is to follow in the law that's already out there for us. Uh, and that's what I intend to do, is follow that law that's out there for us. Um, I really do appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate all of you being out here. We are getting close to the end of the election cycle, so, um, it's been an amazing journey, being able to go out and meet so many people, and to come to so many organizations like this, where you're showing how much you care about your community. Again, particularly on a night like tonight. So, it's an honor to be able to be here and speak with you. Thank you.
Scott, my name is Terry Crainy. Uh, I have a question for you on where the proceedings stand right now. Uh, I understand that the public defender has, um, raised concerns about your representation of your employment.
Sure.
Where does that stand now?
Um, as far as I know, I've addressed it. Uh, I mean, I.
No, I, I'm not asking you, but where does it stand in the judicial process? Because for me, as a voter, um, I have great concern when a public defender says, I have concerns about how this candidate is representing himself. So, as far as you defending yourself, I'm sure you did, but where does it stand in the actual process?
There, there is no process. He wrote a letter.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the, the letter is essentially what you laid out, that he is accusing me of making exaggerated claims. I didn't, but that's all that was, was a letter from an elected official on your taxpayer dime, by the way.
Well, I, I actually didn't represent what was in the letter. I was asking you where it stands.
It's, it stands as that it was written, distributed to the media, and I've addressed it.
The public defender does have responsibility to raise concerns. So, me as a taxpayer, if, if there is someone in the PD's office, or the state attorney, or the district attorney, any of them, if they raise concerns about a candidate, I want to know it, and I want to read it here.
Well, just, an elected official has an absolute obligation to avoid commenting on elections, because they're working for the taxpayers and not providing their own opinion.
Are there any more questions?
All right. Thanks. It takes so much courage to do these jobs, and it takes a lot of courage to run for these roles. Thank you all. Thank you, you three. I have one more, one more speaker tonight, everybody. We're in for a treat. Mr. Kels Heatherington, Heatherington, sorry. I, normally, I'm more articulate than this.
Thanks. Well, as one person once said, it's like you have two last names, Kels, Kels and Heatherington. And, uh, well, I think as Henry VIII once said, I won't keep you long. Uh, my name is Kels Heatherington. Uh, my wife and I moved to Pensacola in 2017. Uh, we have, we, uh, twen, uh, a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter. She was born in 2020. The reasons for my interest in running for the school board is that I believe the county has some problems, as Ray laid out, uh, in his talk. We have failing grades, and the incumbent says, basically, that's not a problem. And, that's a problem in my book. Right now, we have three thousand positions that are approved in the district, and of those, five hundred are not filled. That's creating all kinds of problems. S, um, buses, for example, are having to take these circuitous routes, and so, students are arriving at school late. And because of that, in many cases, the most underprivileged, who need to get, uh, breakfast at school, aren't getting there in time for breakfast. So, then they're not performing well on the, you know, academic achievement tests. But, there's another problem, and that is budgetary related. And this is something that I know a bit about, because I'm in the midst of, uh, getting my CPA. I've passed the first two examinations for the Certified Public Accounting, uh, Certificate. And, um, before that, I was in broadcast and journalism. I worked for Tucker Carlson, uh, who's gone on to Fox News fame, but that, I worked for him before he was, uh, so well-known. Prior to that, I ran a NPR station in Alaska. But... But when it comes to the budget, the school is spending gobs and gobs of money and we're not getting the results we deserve. But worse still, worse still is that of the money that goes to programs, which is, uh, about 400 million and change, a hundred million dollars of that finds its way into administrative services, whether it's operating IT facilities at the headquarters downtown for the school board and the administration, or it is, my favorite, curriculum development services. That line was a 17 million dollar line item in the budget. Now, interestingly, the current incumbent used to lead that division within the school district. But there are other problems that I see and I'm hearing about as I've gone around the district and gotten, um, hundreds and hundreds of signatures to qualify just to be on the ballot. And that is that special education needs are not being met. When a student isn't achieving, uh, in the classroom, they're supposed to be evaluated. But what's happening in Escambia County public schools, according to those who actually are in these departments, is that students are not being evaluated, or they are being evaluated, but after the evaluation, the administrators are saying, eh, extra time, not that necessary. So they're just skipping it. Well, that's a shame because in the long run, it hurts us very badly. If we can help a student who has a few learning differences to live up to expectations and perhaps exceed them, uh, he or she will go on to do hopefully great things and it's worth spending a few extra dollars right now. And to make sure that students are assessed, I want to take the assessment process out of the district. I want, if, you know, when mom and dad come to meet with the school and decide that little Joey or little Sarah needs to be assessed for learning differences, uh, I want the parents to get a, a list of qualified evaluators that they can go to, have the student assessed, come back with the written report, and we, the school district, will implement the prescriptions. So those, those are my priorities. You may have heard about, um, my campaign because, uh, there was a big lawsuit filed, actually. I've heard a lot about nonpartisan stuff. When I ran, uh, almost four years ago now, I said that I was a lifelong Republican, because I am. And a woman who, uh, was running, who is kind of a, a gadfly in these parts, came down and, uh, she kind of became a real harassing person in my campaign and she complained to the state. She said, "You can't say you're a lifelong Republican or a conservative or a Christian." And my response was, "I can damn well say that if I please." Well, that quote got in newspapers across the state. And an organization in Washington DC read about this, con-, wrote about it, contacted me and said, "Mr. Heatherington, could we help you file a federal lawsuit?" And they asked a lot of questions, of course. They did that for me. Today, we have a preliminary injunction from a federal judge right here in Escambia County, uh, right here on the, in the bench for the Northern District of Florida. This woman who sits on the bench, uh, was nominated by the president, confirmed by the senate. She's a hero in my book. And what she said is that the state is darn wrong. And the state has come up with all kinds of arguments to say that you shouldn't be able to say you're a lifelong Republican or a conservative, and that's too bad. Hopefully we'll change the law across the United States, but I expect it to be a, a fight that continues. Let me say one last thing about, uh, the school district, and that is that bullying is a serious issue now. Bullying is out of control. I've heard this from surprisingly a lot of fathers along the campaign trail. They take me inside, they say, "I just wanted to tell you something. My son was subjected to this," or "I saw this, heard about this going on in the locker room." Shocking dads. I would think you'd be moms, I, I mean, uh, call me, you know, um, you're sexist, right? Okay, but it's dads who are concerned about this. So, uh, this needs to be, you know, addressed. And when we hear about situations where there are behavioral problems, they need to be cracked down on. So, and then, oh, this is the final, uh, point that I'll make here tonight is that we, we're hearing a lot about, uh, advancements among professionals in the school district. And, um, what they are saying is that you gotta know someone at the top to get an advancement. Shannon Fetzko, you're here tonight, uh, you were just made assistant principal. And I think that was like a, two years after you joined the school district, right?
Uh, no, I taught for 12 years.
But then you were separated from the school district for a while.
Yeah.
Well, so, but immediately after your father-in-law wins a seat on the school board, you suddenly become, you know, quickly advance up the chain. This is a problem and we're going to stop the, uh, you know, the, the, the self-serving, grab-bag, good old boy network that has found an ugly place here in Escambia County and is not doing good things. Also, I was curious, where is Paul Fetzko tonight? He's, he's not showing up. Okay.
He's at the school board meeting.
I'd, I'd like to address a couple of things at this point.
Sure, sure.
And, and I do appreciate your coming-
Yeah.
-uh, tonight. Number one, Paul Fetzko is, uh, doing his job, uh, at the school board and attending that meeting. He is now on his way and if you can talk long enough, he'll be here by the time you're done. Secondly, do you have anything substantial to, you've made an accusation now against, uh, the Fetzkos. Do you have anything to support that argument or are you just surmising?
Look at the meeting minutes from the school board. You know, they announce the promotions that they grant, right? And it's self-explanatory. It speaks for itself. And so your father-in-law gets elected to a position of supervi-, a supervisory position and suddenly his family's getting promoted. That doesn't look good here.
But is it wrong? I mean, do you, do you actually know who is in contention for that position? And do you know what qualifies, what qualifications?
You know, when-
I don't have the answers to these questions, but I-
Let me answer the question, okay? I listened to your question. Now you let me answer. When, uh, John F. Kennedy was President of the United States and appointed his brother to be Attorney General, no one questioned whether or not his brother was qualified to be US Attorney General. He was probably the most qualified person in the running. The problem was that his brother was in the Oval Office. It didn't look good. And so then there was federal legislation passed to stop that kind of thing from happening in the future.
Okay, so going back to, um, yeah.
Sharon Fetzko?
Yeah. Um, was, was Paul the one who, who put her in that position?
You know, I, I take you back to the example of Robert F. Kennedy. You know, was, was John F. Kennedy the one who said, "You want to head up the Justice Department?" Probably it was one of his advisors who said this would be a good idea, but he went along with it.
Well, maybe then you can explain that magic bullet.
What magic bullet?
From John F. Kennedy, the one that entered three different bodies in four different places?
Uh, uh, yeah. Okay, well-
I got a question.
Sure.
A quick question. She says she worked in the school district as a teacher. I'm a teacher at Warren T. Mill, I have been for five years and I love that school and I had to listen to Ray talk about all the negative things about our school and how we're failing the school, blah, blah, blah. There's a lot of people in that school that care about that school and there's a lot of things that happen when these, uh, when these tests come along. But I think she said she was a teacher for 12 years, right?
But that's not what the meeting minutes say. I'm answering your question. I've listened to your question.
Mrs. Kohler, if you would, please-
Yeah, no, I don't want to come up there because-
Yeah.
That, to me, has experience right there. If I'm in a teacher five years and all of a sudden my principal says, "Hey, you, you're highly effective," which I'm sure she has been, "We're going to put you in this next role as a vice principal because that would probably be the next step," or maybe she could go down to district or wherever she wants to go. We should have 12 years of being a teacher. What are you saying?
Well, here's what I'm saying.
I'm five years a teacher.
Yeah?
My principal comes to me and says, "Hey, I'm a teacher, ready to go."
So if you-
Yes.
All right. You want to look at?
I think Mrs. Fetzko should be able to, uh, address her credentials.
If you look at the meeting minutes, you were granted, I guess you left the district after a period of teaching.
I've, I've never left the school district. I taught-
Because-
Let me repeat. In the, in myself.
Yes.
I taught in the school district for 12 years as a general education teacher. And then I went on to service the ESE teacher for two years and then I was the curriculum coordinator at West Pensacola. Then I was, they, I got the assistant principal position. I was top five teacher of the year, served on every leadership committee. I was a science rep. I have, I, it, my position has absolutely nothing to do with my father-in-law being on the school board. In fact, he is not involved in any conversation that has to do with my position. I take it very seriously and I am very offended that you would think I have worked very hard and I agree with her.
Yeah, well, you know what? Be offended because there are 3,000 employees of the district, okay? And you happen to have made this rapid ascent.
12 years is not rapid, sir. She did her time. She did her time in the-
You know, okay, we're not going to agree on this topic, obviously.
You're disrespecting the-
No, I'm not. No, 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 no. There are a lot of complaints here. There are a lot of complaints here from the outside and in the school district of people not being promoted and this good old boy network favoring folks. Paul, you're a part of it. You know, when failing grades are talked about for the district, you, he says, "Gerald Boone asked me to run, Gerald Boone asked me to continue." You know, just to continue on for a second, it's funny, this woman right next to Sharon Fetzko asked about bankruptcy of, uh, you asked if, uh, Ray had ever filed for bankruptcy. It's funny, do you plan to ask that of Paul Fetzko? Okay, well, I think you should.
Well, there was in context, if you remember, he was talking about having problems with, after BP and he had, was involved in at least two, I believe, um, chef decisions.
You were so disrespectful to Ray, even though I think that he is the Karl Marx of the Rays. You sat there and you sit there like a firing line, waiting to ambush his, his address.
Mrs. Shirley, would you come to the front?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah? Come on up here.
Thank you, Mrs. Shirley.
We're gonna have some fun, all right?
First off, sir, you are disrespectful. You won't let people even finish their sentences. Even if you asked the question, you, you had to shut your mouth right then. You were ready to cut me off.
What, what would you like to say?
Your turn. Okay, you asked me trying to start up another argument if I was going to ask you about you having ever filed bankruptcy or having asked Mr. Fetzko if he ever had. If you remember the conversation, the question, I am trying to get to understand these people, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so-
Fetzko-
Mr. Ask his background, okay? I asked his background as far as did he go, what was his education after high school? I think that's important for a school board member. It doesn't have to be all school knowledge. The school, the school of hard knocks, believe me, teaches us all far more than education in a, in a brick and mortar. However, the reason I hadn't planned on asking that question, I asked that question because he was going through and my point was, if you remember, was did he finish what he started? Even though he didn't finish the culinary school, apparently, he finished what he started. He went inspired to do culinary. He found a gift in sushi making, which I love sushi, and that's good. So he pursued that opportunity and apparently he was good at it. He was at, what do you call it, Jelly Belly or Jelly something? I'm not, Jellyfish, okay?
So then you follow, uh, look-
So he had problems when either COVID or BP or one of the challenges we've all faced. And I ask, okay, so did you have to file bankruptcy? To me, having to do that is a learning experience, something you hopefully don't ever do again. So it is a learning experience of being able to follow your dream, manage your finances, which hey, school board has to be able to manage finances. Was he able to pull this off and manage it? Were there, as our judge people say, were there extenuating circumstances? Were there other problems? I wasn't trying to condemn him. I'm trying to get a feel for his life experience. He doesn't have the education.
Yeah, I'm surprised I'm here defending my opponent. You, you say your question about whether he'd ever filed bankruptcy is not meant to excoriate him. Of course it is.
No, it's not. It's meant to find out-
You're disingenuous.
How did he deal with his financial-
You are, you're so disingenuous. You don't actually, you ask him if he, what about, why don't you ask him if he's able to file, why don't you ask him if he has ever filed for divorce? How about that? Would, would that be a, a positive thing to ask him about? Probably not.
If he had maybe eight or 10 times, maybe he's not a good judge of character, you know? I don't know.
Look, asking someone if they have ever filed for divorce is not a, uh, a nice question. File for divorce or file for bankruptcy, this is not-
You just brought it up. Okay, take it in context.
So what, yes.
I explained that. Apparently the other people get this. The context was he had a financial challenge. He had extenuating circumstances. Hey, BP messed a lot of us up, okay? It, you know, it really did, the whole community. And then how do you relate to that? He related as a survivor. Even if he had filed for bankruptcy, that's fine. He ended up coming out on the other end, probably stronger and wiser for it. I, that's what I am doing. I want to feel for the person.
Okay, so you believe that bankruptcy is just a cleansing process for the capitalistic experiment?
You're putting words in my mouth.
All right.
Yeah, yeah. There, there's no point.
Let me ask one thing about the budget. You know, over the last couple of years since you've been in charge, Paul, the, the budget, we have run a deficit. We're, we're spending more than we take in and the board wants to raise taxes again. Now, he voted against it, but he's part of the problem because he has misma-, helped to mismanage the system so badly, the taxes have to go up. So now you all get the privilege of paying for his screw-ups and his friends on the board. If you like that, he's your man. If you want change, look to me.
I have, I have two more questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure. Oh, okay.
Does anyone else have any questions? I, I, but, oh, let me go first, please. This, naturally, this isn't a prerequisite, but have you ever worked as faculty in a school?
No, I have not.
Do you have any basis for the accusation of nepotism in lieu of merit for Mrs. Fetzko?
When I see Robert F. Kennedy getting to be Attorney General and his last, you know, his last name is Kennedy, the president's last name is Kennedy, there are plenty of qualified lawyers, but they happened to pick this guy, I'm thinking it's because his brother is in the Oval Office.
I'm sorry, this is my fault.
What is your question?
Do you have any evidence of nepotism in lieu of merit?
A lot of people are complaining about nepotism and the old boy network being alive and well here in Escambia County. In fact, at the table I was sitting at, the guy who is no longer there was bragging to me about how wonderful it is that Escambia County has this good old boy network and if you don't know anyone, well, too bad for you.
That's fair. I'll settle for that answer. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. Keith has one last question.
You're back, okay?
Yeah. I, I, I can't help myself because there's one thing I notice, uh, that's common between you and Ray, and that is that you have projection of putting words in other people's mouths as of what their intention is. You deflect back over to RFK and JFK, but you're using a lot of projection and a lot of negativity. Now, something we're always looking for and something that, you know, in my personally, I like to hear something positive that you're able to do. I've heard a lot of things that I know better than coming out of both you and him, and I'm glad you're here. I, I want you to have your opportunity to speak, but do it without projecting what you think the other person is meaning because it really reflects more on you than it does on them.
All right. The proof is in the pudding. Paul Fescow has been employed by the district for like 40 years. He wa, what?
Can you do this without saying Paul Fescow?
No, we can't.
Well, then you're projecting.
No, 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 we're not projecting.
He's here to speak for himself.
We're saying, here's the guy who's been here.
He is here to speak for himself. If you can only project using him, why don't we just listen to him?
I'm, I'm saying that we need change here. He's more of the same, more of the same. All right, thanks for listening. All right, what? How you doing, Paul?
Hello, my name is James and I'm sorry for the outburst earlier, but I did seven years in the construction trade. I'm an electrician and the worst thing you could do when you're at work is discredit the other guy's work to make yourself look better.
Bingo!
For those who may not know it, I'm Paul Fescow. And I am proud of the 38 years that I worked in the school district, 36 in Escambia County, two years in North Carolina, and my four years on the school board. I just heard part of things and I'm going to say that, whether I should wait for questions or what have you, this district's never run at a deficit. We don't have a deficit. We have a surplus at this point. We have a, what I'm, the word I'm looking for, a reserve of $26 million. It's, it's an unrestricted reserve of $26 million. We've had a reserve for the last at least 10 years, if not more, and that's, that's easily seen on any of the school district websites that deal with finance. The other thing about it is I understand that, you know, some people are going to have a, a strong background in finance. There's a CAFR, there's an annual report of the school district's financial status. Has to be done annually, has to go through an auditing. We have always had an A-plus rating for as long as I could remember in Escambia County. There is no deficit whatsoever.
Actually, there is. And there is, here's why. Because the way the accounting works is you can count bonds that are floating.
Okay. The, the difference is this, the finance and school regulation and regular finance are not parallel. They are not equal and there are many differences in school finance.
If you are a gap, you have a deficit.
You know, I, I don't go into bonds and things, so I, I can't answer at that, but, but we have never been found to have any kind of financial, we have an A-plus rating with our bonds companies and, and other things that, that measure us. So I don't see where you see that there's a deficit somewhere. Is there a question?
Yeah, just a, a point of order. The format of tonight's speech, of, the format of tonight's event, and forgive me, normally I'm more articulate, is a spiel followed by open floor for questions. Please hold all questions until the end of the spiel. Thank you, sir.
Well, I really don't want to give a spiel. I just, you know, my background is, is such that I think that everybody has been able to read through the things that have been given to the Pensacola News Journal, WUWF, the League of Women Voters, all of those have responded. I started off in 1976 as a teacher of the deaf in Escambia County. I taught at West Pensacola. I then taught deaf and blind. I became an administrator for the deaf and blind program. After a number of years, I was asked to take over the physically impaired program, which I did. I worked and developed within our own occupational physical therapy programs and adapted physical education. I then was asked to take over hospital homebound, which I did, and to do due process within the school district in special education. That's my background there. My years in administration were in special education, but during that time, I worked in every school in Escambia County. At that time, there were 65 schools and I had students who were enrolled in each one of those schools, so I visited each one of those schools. I knew the faculty, I knew the administration. Because I was working to get handicapped children into regular ed classrooms, I had to know the special education curriculum as well as the general education curriculum as well as advanced, advanced curriculum at the high school level. My years of experience gave me that training, gave me that background, gave me that information. Again, I did that until 2000 and I was asked by then Superintendent Jim Paul to be his assistant for curriculum instruction, which I did for 12 years during the beginning of the accountability system. No Child Left Behind was the federal one, the A-plus plan was the, the Florida plan then Governor Jeb Bush developed. The two programs were not parallel and they didn't sync, but we had to, we had to comply with both in Escambia County. So I, I have been there since the very beginning of the accountability and the, the testing, school grades, the whole thing. What was always said was parents want accountability and that was true and they deserve accountability. They need to know what's happening in the schools, they need to know what's happening with the money, they need to know what's happening with personnel and all these other aspects. But accountability and testing are not necessarily synonymous. It's kind of gone way overboard with the testing part and, and that's why now Governor DeSantis is tra, is train, changing from a one-test, make it or break it kind of thing in the spring to progress monitoring. This coming school year, the, the assessment will be given three times. It'll be given now, August and September, it'll be given in December, January, and it'll be given again in May. At that time, they're looking at the progress that the, the students make from the first administration to the second, to the third, and, and there will be a rubric or a way for that accountability to turn into a school grade. Next year, there will be a lot of things within the school grading system that will be ignored, okay? Next year, elementary schools will only have proficiency in reading, math, and science. They won't have learning gains, they won't have lower quartile, they won't have many of the other things, just next spring. It will come back the following year. Again, I don't want to do spiel, I'd rather know what questions you have and be able to answer those questions. So if my background, if, if you need more on background or you want something specific answered, I'll be glad to do that.
There were two issues that were raised. One is comparing Escambia County to Santa Rosa County and I understand that the distinction between Warrington and District Two, as far as the poverty level goes, has an impact. The second thing that was brought up is the cost of changing the name on school buses, stationery and all of that. And I'd like you to explain how this is going to be done and what the actual expected cost is going to be to do so.
I'll, I'll start with the second one first, but I do want to come back to the Santa Rosa comparison. The first one is there won't be any outward cost at this moment. The school buses, and that's always been said by some people, changing the name on the school buses, we're going to re, be repainting buses. No, we're not. Each year, we replace a portion of the fleet. We have over 350 buses in the fleet and typically we purchase 30 buses. So the new 30 buses will say Escambia County Public Schools instead of the School District of Escambia County or Escambia County School District. The reason for that had come about and it came through a process of, of surveying and working with teachers, administrators, and the public. There were at least 60 people on each one of those groups who were interviewed by the ID group and they went through to have their input and give information. The, the thing that was said was people don't need to look at our schools and think of the school district and think of the district office, a building on Pace Boulevard. That is not the school district. The school district is the Escambia County Public Schools. Those schools make up the district. If, if 75 North Pace Boulevard were gone tomorrow, the Escambia County Public Schools would still exist and they will continue and they are the major focus of what happens in this county. Not what happens at a district office, but the, what happens in a classroom every day. There won't be any change for what's been said, the hundreds of thousands of dollars in changing letterheads and logos and all that. The actual official seal of the school district that everybody has seen, that has the graduation mortar board on it and will remain, that is, the, the seal is going to stay the seal. The logo for the district is changing to what looks like, it, it's actually supposed to be the, the spine or the, the three tech, three books lined up and you just get a picture of the, the top and the side of it. That's what that is looking at, the books. But the, the logo will be used and it will be incorporated the same way, the letterhead. We have inkjet printers. No one prints tons of letterhead paper anymore. When you run it through, the letterhead is produced by the same inkjet that, that does the, the printing that you're having on that paper. So there's not a change. That's a computer change. It's done without any kind of cost. That's, that's the thing that's been said over and over. Things will come out and it will be over time. It's not this event and it's not going to be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to make that change. I'm going to go back now and talk about Escambia County versus Santa Rosa County and it's not based on what I say or what I believe, but it's based on Dr. Ronald Ferguson, who's a researcher at Harvard University. Dr. Ferguson was brought here by the Studer Institute and it was part of CivicCon. The CivicCon is a series of civic meetings and events that happen, I think it's at the Rex Theater. And when Dr., when Dr. Ferguson came here, the expectation was he was going to beat up Escambia County for such poor performance and for not doing what needed to happen with students. His research, when he came in, showed him the opposite and he said, and that's probably recorded and could be watched if you go back to the CivicCon meetings, Dr. Ferguson said, when he did the scatter plot analysis of student growth comparing other districts, not just in Florida, not just our surrounding, but nationwide, he had it. Escambia County, if, if you're familiar with a scatter plot kind of detail, there's a trend line that goes up. Anything below that line is not doing as well as they could. Anyone on the line is where they progressed as they should normally. Anyone above is doing more than you would expect. When Dr. Ferguson did his research, he showed that Santa Rosa was right below the trend line and Escambia County was above. He said the reason for that is this, when the students come in to Santa Rosa County, a, a kindergartner, never been in pre-K or whatever, comes in at this level, Escambia County students come in at this level, but by the end of elementary school, they're both here. So you've got more growth coming from Escambia County schools and students than you do from Santa Rosa. Now, he wasn't trying to beat up on Santa Rosa and I don't think he should. They do a fine job. They're a great county. They're an A district and so is Ocalusa. But we also have the, the research and the data to show that if you compare our top 25% to their top 25%, both Santa Rosa and Ocalusa, we outscore them. We always hear about our lowest 25%, but we have in our schools, our children, there is 65% plus poverty rate in Escambia County, the whole county. Santa Rosa has 24% and Ocalusa has 17. Now, the amount of poverty has a direct bearing and influence on what happens academically in a county and in a school. And anybody who wants to say it's, that that's not the case is, is very wrong, okay? But we have individual schools that have poverty rates of 99 and 100%. And when you deal with that, you have to take that child and give them more and more and more. There's been accusations that Escambia County doesn't do anything for the disadvantaged, the economically disadvantaged, and that's not true. Every bit of the federal money that comes in and the state money for Title I and for Head Start and for other services to needy socio-economically deprived students is going to those students along with, and I know there was comments made at some forum or somewhere that, you know, what has the school board done to help Warrington Middle School? Warrington Middle School has been under the direct authority or the direct operation of the Florida Department of Education and the State Board of Education, who will be here tomorrow morning at nine o'clock at Pensacola State College, Room 15. If you want to address the State Board, it's the first time they've been here since their existence. But anyhow, getting back to that, those two entities, when a school goes into a designation of school in need of improvement or a turnaround school, the Department of Education and the State Board of Education control what happens. They decide who the principal will be, when you change principals, who the teachers will be, what those teachers must have as far as a VAM score, a value-added model score that's given out by the state based on a teacher's previous student's academic growth. Needless to say, if you work in a school that has low performing students, your VAM score is not going to be good. That, that just, that's logic. And so having a high VAM score is not necessarily going to happen. That's why last year, the state replaced 80% of all the core content, core area, the English language arts, reading and math, and science teachers at Warrington Middle School. The teachers who came in who had high VAM scores were used to working with kids who were very capable. They had all the experiences, background, training, other things to, to offer to them. But when they got to Warrington, they didn't relate so well. So there was a good number who left in spite of the large amount of money they were given, again, by the state to come and spend that year at Warrington Middle. Now, there are, there are many of them who stayed and they worked through it. And Warrington Middle School last year, go to the data, had one of the highest algebra scores of all the middle schools in Escambia County. Again, most likely do that, that teacher and, and what was done with it. But you can't, you can't move them all within a short period of time. You can't move students. Students whose reading levels are so low will take multiple years to get there. But if you keep changing the faculty, those students don't have anyone they relate to, anyone that they feel cares about them or that they care about that teacher. And you lose, you lose a good momentum or, or an, an inducement to those kids working harder and doing the things. A student doesn't care what you know until they know you care. And that, that happens over time. It doesn't happen just because somebody moves a faculty in. I'm getting back to Dr. Ferguson. Dr. Ferguson went on to talk about other districts in, in the nation and how some were very high and, and how they did that. And some of that also has to do with how we are funded in Florida. The, the aver, well, not the, the funding for an individual student at this, at this time right now in the state of Florida is $7,000 a year per student. In Massachusetts, it's $19,000. In many other states, it's between 15,000 and 20,000. That's a huge difference in what you're able to pay your teachers and who, not disparaging ours, they work their, their tails off. You could get teachers who would be more willing to relocate if our salaries were higher, but we have to work within the budget that we do have. We have to find other incentives and motivations. And luckily, this district has been blessed with people who, who work hard in spite of everything else. They know that salary is important, the board knows that salary is important, but you only have so much money. Now, I'm going to go back a little bit to the financial, just as I'm rambling and I should be taking more questions.
Okay.
Okay? One of the reasons that people ask, well, why do you need a $26 million reserve? Okay? We have a lot of hurricanes. We have a lot of storms. FEMA will pay for the repair replacement eventually, but the school districts have to pay upfront. When I got on the board in 2018, I had been at the assistant superintendent position in 2004 when Hurricane Ivan hit and we had over $100 million worth of damage to our schools. In 2019, I'm on the board and it comes before us that we're getting a FEMA reimbursement. I says, for what? We didn't have any storm. Oh, that's from Ivan. It took over 15 years to finally get the last FEMA installment. That money has to be paid upfront and then you get that back. They don't hand you the pot of money and say, here, go replace this. You have to show them the paid bill. Well, if you don't have a reserve to do that, then you have to do what districts like Hillsborough did last year when they had to borrow money. So when you borrow money and you wait 15 years for replacement, what interest do you pay on that borrowed money that you had to do to pay for the damages before FEMA came back? That's why we have a $26 million reserve. Those things happen that way. There are also grants that operate that way. You could get the grant, but you have to pay for it upfront and they will reimburse you for what you paid for. I worked with a lady when I first moved to the district office by the I worked with a lady when I first moved to the district office by the name of Barbara Linker, probably one of the most respected chief finance officers in the state of Florida. And I don't say that. I say that as I've traveled to other districts in the state, and people remember her for her honesty, her sense of fairness, her ability to do within a budget. She was renowned within the state of Florida. But she taught everyone who was part of the staff why they did that. But she also said, "There is no monetary institution more highly regulated than the schools. Every penny is accounted for, down to the last penny." And so, you know, you could look under a microscope to see that, you know, is the money being spent the way it's supposed to be? Yes. With that, I also want to say thank you all who voted for the half-cent sales tax and the Half-Cents Sales Tax Watchdog Committee, who oversees that money when it comes in to make sure it's spent the way the voter said it needed to be spent. So there's not a penny from that half-cent sales tax that goes to a facility in this county that doesn't house children. So there's no money that's spent from that tax on the district office, the Hall Center offices, or anything else that doesn't house children, any maintenance, any bus barn, what have you. With that, I'll... Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Hey, Ms. Donahue, please come up to the microphone.
So, back to the Warrington question.
Okay.
It was brought up earlier that, and you have all the special needs experience.
Right.
That when the kids have special needs and need to be tested and put into programs, it was said that they might get the testing, but then they don't get the follow-through of being put in those programs. Can you just speak a little bit to that? And that was specifically to the Warrington School, so you might know a little more about it. I'm just curious, because this is my district. I don't have kids, but I'm curious.
No, that's fine. And I will tell you this: The special needs students are covered under federal laws and state laws. There's a timeline from when the time a child is referred for testing, and it's changed since I first, since the laws first came into effect in the '70s, okay? Now, when a child is suspected of having any kind of learning disability or any disability, they have to go through an RTI process, and that's a response to intervention. The powers that be seem to believe that there are kids who are being placed into special programs without the need for it, okay? So they said, "Before you automatically take a child and put them in a special program, you put them in the regular class, and you try these interventions in that class." Okay? That has to go on for a period of time, and I can't tell you the exact number of weeks or months that that happens. Then the testing begins. When a child's referred for testing, it has to happen within a specific timeframe. These are all audited. These are all looked at. Any child who's deemed eligible for special education services gets them. There's no one who doesn't get what they are eligible for. Go ahead.
You said when they're referred, can a parent request it?
Yes. A parent can request, the school can request, it comes from anywhere.
And it's treated the same way?
Yes, it is. It is.
If the school district is so flush with cash, why are you raising taxes?
I think I understand. So to give some context on the special services, can you also speak to the fact that that is offered even to children in private school? The reason why I ask this is when my youngest was in preschool, maybe two, two and a half, we started to suspect that she had some hearing deficiency. And even though she was in a church school that we privately paid, we were able to take her to the Hall Center and have that testing done, and it was a phenomenal experience.
Yeah.
And though, you know, we're city taxpayers, I was very impressed that those services were available, you know, irrespective of the fact that she was, you know, she was in a private preschool, that type of thing. And that would have been, they were phenomenal, their follow-up for hearing assessment, speech therapy, and they were very thorough in what was offered to her, even though she was in an Episcopal school, traveling into a Catholic school. Those services are not just exclusive to the kids in public schools. It's an incredible resource for kids in public schools.
Right. And that goes for students who are in parochial schools, private schools, what have you. The Catholic schools receive their portion of Title I dollars. So if a child is deemed eligible, socio-economically deprived, that portion of money goes to those schools. Now, it doesn't just go to the school. The state has changed and says, "The district must buy the service for that school." So I'm going to use Redeemer Lutheran School. If there are students who are eligible here, and it would generate $15,000, they won't give $15,000 to the school, but they'll say, "What do you need that costs $15,000?" Or work at it, and you could put added money to it or however. But we have to purchase the service or the materials. We don't just hand somebody the money. And that's, again, parochial schools, private schools, so on and so forth. The services for special education, and we do provide. We have an audiology suite and an audiologist, and we will test in audiology any childbirth through 22 with a suspected hearing loss, okay? And it doesn't matter what school they attend, if they reside in Escambia County. With services like speech and language, OT and PT, sometimes, those are also into the private school or the school that the child attends. The only reason that a child who might be at Sacred Heart School would have to go to a public school to get it is if the equipment is not available for that therapy at that site. There are some things that are just too large to be able to transport on a daily basis or weekly basis for that. But speech and language services, also testing, any of the things done with the school psychologist, that's done, you know? Again, if you live in Escambia County, there are the students eligible for it. And pre-K, like I said, in hearing and vision, we serve birth up. The youngest one that I ever staffed was at birth. The child was born without eyeballs, so we knew he was blind. And we began services then, working with the parent in the home, not bringing a child that young into a site. We have, we do have tremendous special education, exceptional student education programs in this district. I've talked to some people, and you probably saw the thing I talked about, the Snoosland Center, which is a multisensory experience center for severely handicapped students who, many times, they don't or they can't process individual senses or sensation.
At Westgate?
At Westgate. And it was a joint partnership between the school district, the county, and private citizens who donated. Judge Lacy Collier was the one who headed the private part of it. But it has been known as the largest and best Snoosland site in the Western Hemisphere. And people don't know that they should take pride in these things. At many times, this district was the site of choice for military families who had severely handicapped kids, because they knew we had the services, we had the facilities, we had the personnel to handle whatever was needed.
And then on the other end, the very fast success and performance of that International Baccalaureate Program.
Well, yeah.
Who flew everybody's records out of the water.
Yeah. Our IB program is one to be applauded, and so is our dual enrollment in all the high schools and our advanced placement classes. You know, we have honors classes also, but the kids have been very successful. Last year, Pensacola High School, a large part from IB, earned over $14 million in scholarships. Every other high school is somewhere between $2 and $4 or $2 and $5 million. And again, our kids have the opportunities. We have open choice in this district. So if the child lives in Warrington but wants to go to Ernest Ward, as long as the parent provides the transportation and there is capacity at that school, it's granted. You know, and that's good. It's good and bad. The bad part to it was, there were 735 kids who were zoned to attend Warrington Middle School who did not. They choiced out. And had those students, who I would believe to be more academically competent, been there, the grade would have been different. But that's neither here nor there. Going back to that kind of thing, there were 55 students removed from Warrington Middle School for behavior, okay? And they were put in an alternative program. But the difference is, with the alternative program, those students, when they took the test, those scores came back to Warrington. So the students who were removed for behavior, who probably still weren't doing a whole lot academically, their scores counted, but the ones who transferred out elsewhere didn't count. I don't know. That's not up to me to decide. I just point that out as a reality.
Wait, can I ask about the taxes?
Yes, go ahead.
The school board is raising taxes. If the school board doesn't have any money needs, why are you raising taxes?
Again, that's part of the funding formula. It comes through the tax assessor and the property appraiser's office. There's the amounts that have to come. The property taxes go into the state, and I am not the person to give detailed information on this. But that money goes in, and there are things that have to happen. One of those things has to do with millage rates. Millage rates are the amount that's charged against properties and other things. When it comes back, the only area that the school district can change the rate on is capital outlay, okay? And they could raise up to 1.5 mils. Well, we haven't done that probably in 10 years, been at 1.5. It's been more like 1.2. And I believe last year was 1.234, somewhere in that range. Well, when you do that, you have the ability then to raise it to 1.5, or to do what they said you could keep what you had last year, or you could go to a rollback rate, okay? The rollback rate is the amount of millage it would take to generate the taxes to pay the exact amount that you got in capital outlay the year before. And I'm, off the top of my head, don't quote me on this, I'm going to say that last year, the millage rate would have generated $27 million, all right? And so that was with last year and the property values. Property values have gone up tremendously because of the lack of property available for people who want to move, and you can't find a house. So the prices have gone up. The property appraiser gave us the highest amount of taxable property that has ever been seen in this county. And what it was is, if you stayed at the 1.2, it would have generated about $4 million more than last year. But if you went to the rollback rate, it would do just the $27 million. So I and Mr. Adams said, "We're getting a lot of capital money from the half-cent sales tax, and we don't need to go with that lower rate, which was still lower than the 1.5, but it generated more money because of the higher property values." So we said we'd go with the rollback rate and keep the $27 million. Well, we were outvoted 3 to 2. And so why you would want to do that is up to the people who voted that way. Again, I was thankful, and still am thankful, to the half-cent sales tax and the money that's there. I believe we could have cut things in order to stay with the $27 million capital outlay and not need the $29 or $30 million that the other did. The thing to remember, though, is this: Even going with the same tax rate as last year, 1.23, okay, it generated more money, but your tax on a $200,000 home would have been $80 less this year with that than it was last year. And with the .9 something that Kevin Adams and I were going for, the rollback rate, you would have had a tax cut or break of about $110. So either way, it was less than property taxes, but because it wasn't the rollback rate, that had to be advertised as a tax increase.
But so, okay, so the school board felt it was necessary to raise taxes. Is that right?
Three members of the school board did.
Okay, so the school board as a body decided to raise taxes.
Right.
So that was the outcome. You voted against it.
Right.
Now, why would the school board feel it was necessary to raise taxes if they already have all the money?
Well, because inflation. Has your, no, has your cost gone up? The inflation, the cost of those same 30 school buses, which that money would be used for, is about 15% higher than it was last year?
That doesn't work, Paul.
It does work.
No, that doesn't work because the real estate values are inflating. Your operating costs are inflating.
Right.
So are you trying to say that the real estate prices are not inflating as quickly?
No, no, no.
Well, then your argument doesn't work.
No, it does work. It does work. The property costs or the values have gone up, but along with that, everything that you would buy out of capital outlay money has also gone up. So what we...
The school board goes up when real estate goes up, right?
Say that again.
The tax take...
No, it's not automatic. That's why that millage rate is the only thing that the school board gets to vote on. It's not automatic. They vote on whether they want it to go up or how high, up to 1.5.
The millage rate doesn't need to go up, because if the...
Well, that's what I said.
Okay. So what you now are saying is that...
I'm not saying anything different than I said the first time.
No, you're saying that inflation required...
Why did some board members think we needed more money? Because of inflation, what they were going to buy out of that, and I'm using as the example school buses. The cost of the school bus, each bus went up over $20,000.
But you've already gotten the increase because the groundless, the real estate went up, so...
That didn't, no, that didn't change what we got. That money is done in calculating what the state puts in and what the state gives. I could, you could get all the paperwork on it, and it's there and it's in charts. It's also, it's shown in a pie chart, and it's shown in other graphs, maybe more under... You have a finance background, you would probably understand that better when you looked at it, but it's available on the school district website. And you could probably also request the paper part of it if you wanted to from the finance department at the school district.
I still don't understand, but I appreciate your thinking.
Okay. Well, and again, it's really hard to wrap around how you would say that you're going to have the same taxes last year, but you're going to get more money. Well, you get more money if it was the same...
Let's try one more time. So let's say your millage rate is 1%, okay? So the higher the real estate goes, you're going to get more revenue, right?
Right.
Okay. So you are getting inflation. Inflation's built in.
It's not, because even though that goes up and there's higher tax rates, that doesn't go directly to the school district. That goes to the state. The state does their funding, and they take the money, they'll take it and they'll send it back, okay, a certain amount. Each district is different with different tax bases and things like that. And so there are some districts who send $400 million into the state, and they will get $430 million. Some districts will send $400 million and get $380 million. There's a, what they call a district cost differential. It goes way back to the '60s or '70s, and they said it costs more to live in Miami Day than it does Pensacola, so they should get more, and Escambia doesn't need as much because it doesn't cost as much to live here. That's what changes all that, and that all goes to the state. The state takes it all and puts it back. Now, they require that the local effort by the county be a certain amount, and then they only give the school district millage flexibility for that capital outlay, and that's it. And again, it's limited to 1.5 mils. Yes, sir?
I have one question. Congratulations on the AAA bond rate. That's good. That's a case you're going to be better. But the question I had is, how much money do you get from the Lotto, and is that earmarked? I know it's a weird question, but you're a student that you love this education. Is that earmarked for certain things?
Yeah, in Tallahassee. The lottery saying that they give so much to schools was kind of a scam, okay? Because it was meant to supplement, not supplant, okay? The difference between that, when you supplement, you take and you give more. So when the... So when the lottery was being approved, they said, "This money is going to supplement what the schools need" because schools have never been funded at 100% for the entirety of the schools being in the state of Florida in the 1800s, whatever. Never been at 100%. So this was meant to supplement, but instead it supplanted. What they did is they said, "Okay, the state gave X amount, but now that there's this, we're going to take this away and let them replace it with that." So it was a wash. It never supplemented. They supplanted the money and took it, and it's in state coffers. So there lottery dollars go into education, yeah. And the way it does that is not to the schools, but it does it in a really nice way, too. It's the scholarship program. The Bright Futures. Bright Futures Scholarship. That's where that lottery money, the majority of it, goes to that. And I would never argue with taking that away from the students who work to do that. That's a good thing. Again, you know, as I see it, there are things that could be done differently. There's always somebody's opinion of, "This isn't important, so let's cut this." Or, "That's more important, so let's add it there." But in the end, you have to make decisions. In my opinion, the first thing is, is it what's best for students? If it's best for students, that's what you do. Yes, sir?
Recently, I saw on the news in Alabama how they're having mental health counselors in the schools to help the students with their mental issues. What's your answer to that?
We've had that, and we continue to have it, and expands every year. We have licensed mental health counselors, and we have contracts with Lakeview Center and other mental health providers. At this point, every secondary school has a licensed mental health counselor assigned to them. And they could be seen on an emergency basis or what have you. Excuse me. But the other thing that's been effect now for a couple of years and is being expanded is the navigator program. And the navigator is a social worker. Now, we used to have what was called school social workers, and then it became visiting teachers, and they were more like truant officers. They sometimes did other things, too, but truancy was the number one that they did. We still have a handful of those. But we have, the navigators are in the schools that have the highest percentages of low income. And they're meant to work between the school and the family and the community. So if Johnny's family is struggling to get their electric bill paid, and Johnny lets his teacher know, the teacher will get the navigator and make a home visit, go into the house and say, "Hey, these are the social service outlets that will help you with your power bill." In the meantime, they'll say, "What do you do? Are you employed?" If not, the navigator will help that parent to access the, not one as, but you know, the hiring-
Workforce escrow.
Workforce, okay. To find jobs, to get training if it's needed, to get the support in filling out the applications, to do all that background work that is a social service side of it. And it's been great. It really has. Is there more needed? Yeah, always. But there again, then some people need to step up and be able to help themselves a little bit. And so you want to provide, and the ones who can't get out or can't make contact to do those things, you want to help them every way you can. Now, the ones who you add, you give them, or attempt to give them the help, but they don't take it, there's not much you could do. Yes, sir?
So have you accompanied any of the navigators? And also, have you personally visited places like Mayfair?
Yes. I have not gone out with the navigators. They go one-on-one. It's a family privacy thing, and that's the way that that happens. But during my time in the classroom, well, not the classroom, yes, I made contact with all the parents that I worked with. But as an administrator, I went into the homes of the students who lived in the projects or wherever. I always encouraged my teachers, and there's one lady in particular I always think of. Her name is Martha Nelson. No, it's not. Martha Johnson. Martha Johnson taught physically impaired kids at work in middle school. At that time, Aragon Court was still a housing project. It wasn't those million-dollar homes that's down in Aragon now. But it was a housing project, and Martha said, "I want to go and visit all my students before the school year starts." She says, "But I don't want to go by myself." I says, "Martha, I'm with you." We spent the afternoon going door-to-door in Aragon Court. As in special education, I did that. I made home visits regularly. The thing that that really helps with you is this. There are a lot of times you don't even realize how poor some of our kids and the conditions that they live in. I had a young girl who was deaf who lived in a house somewhere around the McDavid area, north of the county, when I made the home visit because everyone was complaining that she had body odor and her clothes were dirty. Well, I went to the home, they had a dirt floor. They didn't even have a slab or wood or anything. They didn't have a washer or a dryer. They didn't have indoor plumbing. And this isn't very many years ago. And that's the conditions that many of our kids still have. And that's why in the schools, you go into any, especially the secondary schools and many of the elementary, you'll see a washer and dryer. Well, they're not doing home ec. They're doing the clothes of the kids who can't get it done at home so that the child doesn't feel stigmatized and ostracized or what have you. Our school district does a lot for our students, and many times it's not known nor appreciated.
But why are the buses running behind?
If they're running behind now, because when you're moving 300 buses and 39,000, well, we don't transport every kid. Let's say 20,000 students. It's going to take a week or so to be able to get the routes going the right way, to know where each stop is and how long it takes for those stops. And because there are parents who hadn't put in the information, they moved houses or what have you, they changed phones, and that wasn't known on the first day of school. So those kids still get added.
All right, so but this is not just the first day problem. This was a problem last-
Last year, oh, yeah. We had 100 vacancies in transportation, Kels. 100 drivers down out of 300.
Okay. That's the reason.
Yeah.
And so, because this is an ongoing problem, and kids are not get, who need to get to school.
Right.
They don't have breakfast at home, aren't getting there on time, so they miss breakfast.
No, they don't miss. If they don't make it in time for breakfast, they get breakfast in the classroom.
All right.
Okay. That's the truth. But no child is going to be deprived of-
That's the school model.
Well, and again, we started this school year with three openings in transportation, three. And we have four people now going through the training who will finish in the next couple of weeks.
Someone asked a YO candidate about a fund for bankruptcy.
Okay.
Have you ever filed for bankruptcy?
Yes, I have.
Can you explain a little?
No, I don't have to explain that to you. I did. And it was not a good thing. It was a, it was not good. It was a learning experience, and I hate to say that. It was terrible. It's one of the worst things I ever did. But I paid back every bit of the money. And so, you know, you go, there's different types of it. I paid it back, and I learned a lot in doing so. Am I proud of that? Heck, no, I'm not. But also, I've gotten to the point where I'm not ashamed because I had things that I had to do, or there are family circumstances or things that go into a person's life that you have to deal with. And you don't turn your back on people that you care about, and you don't ignore their needs, even if it ends up putting you in a pile of crap.
I'd like to speak on behalf of my father.
No.
No, I watched my father work three jobs while I was in school, Kels. Three jobs. Worked in the school district, worked at a bait store, and also worked at another place down here in Lee Butros, a gas station, to make ends meet for us. My father is a blue-collar guy. My father works, my father understands work ethic. All right? He went through things in life. I understand that, but I'm proud of my father. Proud of everything he's done for some years. And to hear people sit here that don't have the real knowledge and education sitting here and trying to chastise or finance or this or that, it's somebody's personal decision. I mean, it's just, there's no place for it, Kels. I get it. I understand, and I respect you as somebody that's running. I do. I respect you as an opponent of my father's in this race. I get it. But my dad is an upstanding person that works very hard, Kels, for all children in this district. He doesn't look political. He doesn't do this for political gain. He doesn't do this for a political future. He does this for education. He does this for kids.
I'm fixing to address that.
I wanted your take to start at this question.
It's not about shorting, Kels. It's about being professional. It's about what the form is actually about. I can get it in.
All right. Yes.
Mr. Fetsko?
Yes.
You've explained the politics behind what you do for the school district. You explain your job, and you do it very well. But I want to know what makes you tick, why you're doing it, where your heart is.
It goes back to Andrew started. I grew up in the projects in Pittsburgh. I didn't have a silver spoon or anybody to help me. I had a mother who most likely was the first bipolar woman that I, or person I ever met, before bipolar was diagnosed or treated. I had a dad who drove a truck, and he was gone most of the time. I had to learn to do for myself as best I could from a very early age. And what makes me tick is that no matter what, you have things that you do for other people. I grew up, our next-door neighbors had three deaf kids. Their youngest children were deaf. They were much younger than me, but I watched them grow. I watched them thrive. I watched them perform. And I enjoyed spending the time with them. So that's why I went into deaf education. Did I have other aspirations? Yeah. You know, I was in the Navy. I was in the flight program. That didn't work out because the Vietnam War ended. I was the only person sad to see the Vietnam War end because the Navy had a glut of pilots. And they took 150 of us who had been through basic and OCS and said, "Gentlemen, if you're not ROTC or Academy, you have no financial tie, and we don't need you." And so that changed my life right then, but in a good way. Because I ended up at West Pensacola Elementary, where I met my wife and where I've stayed now, happily married for 45 years. I didn't have things given to me, but I always wanted to give to somebody else. The hardest thing that I have, the hardest time I have, and I'll say this right now, and I've said it before to a select few people, and I'm sharing this now, asking somebody to do something for me or to give me money for a campaign, it is, I can't stand it. I've never asked anyone to do something for me I would rather do for somebody else. And that's why I do this. Now, I want to serve as long as I am, as long as I'm doing good for children and families, I'll stay on the school board. Our term limits, it won't be that much longer. But I want to do that. I had some situations. I've worked with very needy parents or needy children, very sick children, kids who struggled. And I always wanted to make sure that they were respected, and so were their families. The family of a handicapped child deserves everything we could do for them because they're dealing with something that's broken their heart already and that they don't know what kind of future there's going to be. How well are they going to make it? What will, will there be something that happens that gives them the strength to go on? So that's the stuff that drives me. Again, if the people say, "Paul, you've done enough time, go on home," I'll go home, and I'll be proud of the things that I've done. And what can make me tear up again is the people that I've worked with over the years and the families. I have, just a few weeks ago, I had a grandmother who was as mean as a snake, and she was so difficult to work with, call me to say she needed help with her granddaughter. And I says, "Why are you calling me?" She says, "I know you'll get it done." I says, "But you've been so nasty to me." She says, "Yeah, and you've forgiven me for that." I says, "Yeah, but I don't want to forget." Yeah. But, and so I did help her. And again, because of my experiences, I have areas or bits of knowledge or information that I have acquired that can help a lot of people. So if I'm not re-elected and somebody calls me to say, "Hey, Paul, I need help with, who do I see?", I'll tell them. If you need to know who you need to call or what's available or what you can do, I'll tell them. You know, I'm not going to say, "Hey, I'm no longer on the board. I don't work for the district. You know, go find somebody else." Make it easier on them. They shouldn't have to struggle if I have information. And that's where I am with it. You know, again, running and campaigning is not in my comfort zone. But I do it because I have skills and abilities that I could offer. And as long as they're still valuable to people out there, I will continue to do it. Yes, sir?
Paul, appreciate your service to the community. I've heard that military leadership has had some feedback and concerns about the quality of education for people coming to serve here. And then there was discussion about creating an off-site at the PSC.
Right, right.
Can you speak to that?
It began because then Captain Martin, who was the CO of NAS Pensacola, had a disagreement with then Superintendent Malcolm Thomas about what schools the kids who lived on base were assigned to. And the captain said, "As long as they're assigned to Warrington Elementary, Warrington Middle, Navy Point, I'm not going to get people to come here. They're not going to want to put their kids in those schools." And that was true. And what the captain wanted was the base to be zoned to a high-performing school. Well, that's happening. The new Pleasant Grove Elementary, because it's right out the back gate of NAS, will be the zoned school for elementary and Bailey for middle school, Escambia for high school. But in the meantime, you know, things have improved and people understand that there's sometimes more to it. Now, along with that, the next CO came into it, and there was a push for some people that said, "We don't want our kids to go to Escambia High School. We want them to have a dual enrollment opportunity at Pensacola State, and Pensacola State's going to do a charter there." Well, they do. But I don't know how many kids they have at this point. It may be just a handful. Kind of cutting off their nose to spite their face because this coming school year, we have a memorandum of understanding with the University of West Florida to do dual enrollment at Escambia High School. Why is that important to do it at the high school? Because if kids from Escambia, from the west side of town, have to drive to West Florida campus, it's going to take them at least an hour each way, which will take out any extracurricular or athletic or any kind of things along those lines that they might have the opportunity to participate in. You know, you can't be in band if you're on UWF, and you're not going to be on any athletic team if you have to spend all your time traveling. And that's why it becomes important to do it at that site. Again, I'm going to go back and tell you that Escambia High School has some fine graduates, and they do well. They have a lot of advanced placement courses, upper-level courses, and students who graduate from there do well in college. Yes, sir?
My wife was a kindergarten teacher at Allen Astor Elementary School when I was-
Right.
And we came from an F school, went to an A, and that's when the influx of choice came in, flooded it, and it went down.
Right.
Pretty fast.
Right.
That education, what did the district learn from that? Because I'm looking at the global that took over Allen Astor and a few other schools.
Right.
It's a D still. So what, I mean, that principal there at Allen Astor, that grew up, I have to give her all the credit because she put her blood wet and sweat in her ass.
When students choice out, it could be for a lot of different reasons. It's not always because they're running for something. It's not always because they're running for something. It may be running to something. The, the parents may live or, or work at a, near a school that's better for them as far as transportation purposes and getting to and from. And, and so, they'll exit for a lot of reasons and, and, and I, I, I can't say specifically why. A lot of people try to avoid schools that have children who have high poverty levels. That being said, my boys started at Edgewater. My wife taught at Edgewater. The first year that I was here, she was at West Pensacola. Back then, last hired was first let go because you didn't know what the enrollment was going to be. So they always let the last one hired go. Well, she ended up getting picked up at Edgewater and I still stayed at West Pensacola because that's where the deaf ed program was. But our boys went to Edgewater, Myrtle Grove, West Pensacola. And these are the schools that my wife taught at. They, at that time, we were zoned for Bellevue Middle School for middle. They went there and then Escambia High School. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to brag and I'm going to say that my sons have done extremely well with the education they got at Escambia High School. I used to hear all these stories about, oh, there's fights in the halls and you can't do that. Not a single time did I ever get a call, "There's a fight in the hall." Not a single time have I ever gotten a call that, you know, the, the kids are doing this or, you know, drug use, this, that, and the other. I'm sure that there's a faction that does that, but it is very small. And I'll go back to, to something. There was a, a book called The Millennial Something. Jim Paul was the one that made us read it as a staff. And it showed where over 90, over 90% of kids don't ever get in trouble. It's the same 10% that are re-offenders. But it paints a picture of that school or that place as being like just chaotic. And it's not true. You know, Andrew, you were at Escambia for four years. How many fights were you in?
Very little. I played multiple sports there. We're on the play on this. I'm back here as an educator in the district right now as an elementary teacher. I have a small business that I own. Done pretty well. My brother's a doctor. My brother, other brother went to the Air Force. We're, we're a product of the West Side. We're a product of Market Road and I'm proud of that. And I apologize for my, my speaking out of context there, but I'm very proud of my father. He's not a politician. And if you're looking for a politician, that's not your guy. He's an educator. And I mean that.
I appreciate it. You know, I, I know that I had a school board meeting and I had to be at. And I'm sorry that you're here a lot later than you thought you were going to be. I just hope that you've gotten information and that it's helpful for you. If you haven't voted yet, you need to. Whoever you vote for, you need to vote. Don't give up your vote. And, and I say that and, and as, as one of the people, and I'll admit this. I was opposed of an appointed superintendent. I believe in voting for who you want. And I still am in favor of a elected superintendent. But that's not happening. So as long as I'm on the school board and as long as I'm involved in it, I want to find the best one that we could get to take care of our kids and our teachers and our, our district. All right? Anything else? Thank you.
I have one, one joke I think.
Mrs. Fetsko, would you, would you come up?
I just-
Please.
I don't, I want to know if you're ready. Because I know that was a big question. The pre-K got brought up earlier.
Yeah.
And why we don't have more of them and what's in place to try to get more pre-K?
Okay. I guess the irony of this, that, that somebody who's been saying stuff about pre-K apparently doesn't watch any of the school board workshops or, or meetings. Because we worked this past Friday to come up with a legislative agenda. Part of that agenda is to increase our ability to do pre-K. What isn't understood is this. At one time, the, the only pre-K educational program in Escambia County was in the public schools. That goes back into the, again, late 70s and the 80s. And then at some point, it, it became an issue that the public schools were taking kids out of private daycare. And so the legislature was encouraged to act and to change things. And that's when the Early Learning Coalitions were established. And with that, then, all pre-K education would go through the Early Learning Coalition and not through the schools. And the funding for schools is for K-12, not pre-K-12. So it, it became with the, the inception of VPK, voluntary pre-kindergarten, and trying to get every four-year-old into a VPK placement, that the private providers didn't have the capacity to take care of all the kids. So they said, "What can happen that the school will go back to doing that?" The combination of, of the things that are different. If you go to a private daycare that has VPK, you get three hours of pre-K academics. And the rest of the time that the child's there, they're in daycare. And the, the, the three hours are paid for by the coalition. The rest of the day is paid for by the parent. But if a child's enrolled in a school district VPK program, it's a full day, all paid, with transportation. But the funding comes from Title I and Head Start. They do a, a combination of the VPK dollars with, with Title I dollars for the majority. Because we also use only certified teachers, not the, the ones who go- and, and I'm not, I'm not talking about, there are great people who do this in the private sector, the, the, those programs. But those, they are not certified teachers. We also have a, a teacher aide in every one of the VPK classes. So we do the entire day with transportation, with food, with an aide, an assistant. And, and, and we're able to do that. But we are limited into how much we could do for two reasons. We can only have a VPK class or classes where it's a Title I school. Because we can't take Title I dollars and put them at a school that's not Title I eligible. So that limits which elementaries we can go into. The other part is, we also have constraints with the facilities. Because you can't just go and put them in, a, a four-year-old into a elementary classroom. The easiest way to explain that is the toilets are too big. Okay? So what needs to happen is the refurbishing and, and the renovation of the, that facility. But our schools are all at capacity. So we really don't have rooms, extra rooms available to do that. We would have to rent modulars or portables. And we don't like putting kids into portables with the kind of weather we have. When there's bad weather, kids who are in portables have to come into the building. So their day's disrupted. They're not in a classroom. They're just trying to be safe in a facility. So there's a lot of reasons that you just can't initiate VPK anywhere you want it. You don't have the funds. You don't have the facilities. You may find the teachers, but there's no other funding stream. So what we as a board did last Thursday and tonight is have, as part of our legislative agenda, that the state reconsider and start funding pre-K, at least VPK classes wherever they're needed. And, and in so doing, they have money that they use, like, and I know this should have been brought up if it wasn't. Somebody was going to say, "Okay, last year at Warrington Middle School, you had Learning Systems Incorporated there and they were being paid $400 and some thousand dollars to do that." Well, there's, a good part of that is that it was a performance contract. Since they didn't make the C, they only got half that money. Okay? No matter how many staff they had there. So there is no silver lining to, to Warrington being closed. But if there was something that was close to it, that's a little glimmer that you saved a couple hundred thousand dollars. But what we've said is if the state will do that and give them, and, and the state's the one who paid it, not us. That's also something people don't realize. When they go into this turnaround thing, tho, those external operators are paid for by state dollars, not by our local money. And so, what we've said to them is if you're going to pay money for these schools to have an external operator and do all these other things, why don't you make sure that at least at those schools, that you fund what we need to run a pre-K program? Because pre-K is one of the best things we could do to have a child ready for kindergarten and ready for academics. They're not coming to us ready. Okay? They don't, many of the students don't know their names. They have a nickname that they go by. They don't know their real name. They don't know their parents' names. They don't know where they live. They don't know colors. They don't know shapes. They don't know, these are all things that, that the students who come from a more fiscally capable area are, are going to come with. And, and those are the things that are measured. Because VPK gets tested too. And if they don't come up to the, the numbers and V, they shut them down. And that's private and school district. So, but, but we want to do, I want to do more VPK. Like I said, I had, you know, pre-K kids from birth up. And I know that what needs to happen, and when you have the, the teachers working with parents at that young age, when those kids really need to have that kind of interaction, it makes all the difference in the world. But the funding thing is the big thing at this point. And, and I think it would be hard-pressed to have private daycare providers agree to let the school districts take over pre-K again. But we're going to try because it's worth trying. All right?
That was a curtain call.
It looks like we have a, another guest, a potential guest speaker. Mr. Mike Collet is in. Do you want to come and say hey?
Yeah, I just want to say, like, you have a spill? No. No, I don't want to talk with this crap. Just go, bro. You guys are special. I would have been earlier, but I was just talking with Tuesday at the Elks Club. Do you want me to talk to you places at one time? I'm just real low in the work.
Well, you got the better half anyway.
Yeah, my wife's here instead.
Before I close the meeting, and I'm, I'm seeing everyone standing up to walk out, I'd like to take a second to thank the candidates that have come tonight and let them know how much we appreciate the role that they, that they do and how hard, how much we know the job of running for that office is hard. Thanks, everyone. And if there are no objections, I'm going to move to close the meeting. Meeting adjourned.